Good morning, welcome to this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, December 10th, 2019. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Supervisor Serna Peters Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and is webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, December 13th, at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. This meeting is also broadcast live on KUBU Radio on 96.5 FM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board, you may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Please take a moment to silence your electronic devices at this time.
Thank you very much. And just so everybody knows, we're having some technical difficulties today, so we will be doing voice votes, and I will be operating the clock, so if any member of the board notices that I have fallen down on that duty, please hit me with a spitball at any time, and I will respond accordingly. Please stand and join in the pledge of allegiance.
Throw a spitball back, is that what you do?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with that, also, welcome back Supervisor Serna.
Thank you.
Adam Clark.
Okay, for your items today, Consent Matters 1 through 30. I do need a motion to continue item number three. It's to approve a resolution certifying 16 county of Sacramento Melrose Community Facilities District annual reports.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
And then I have one note, that item 11, you're introducing an ordinance amending Sacramento County Code Chapter 6.99.265 Title VI relating to limited service charitable feeding operation and adding food bank fee ordinance. You waived reading on this, you're going to waive reading and continue to December 17th for adoption.
Okay, and I do have one slip for item number 19, which I will hear the member of the public now, is Terry O'Sullivan here.
Item number 19, you're acting as the Carmichael Recreation and Park District. Approve an amendment to Carmichael Park Master Plan to shift two new bocce ball courts and determine that the prior negative declaration with the current addendum is adequate and appropriate. The environmental document is a negative declaration.
Terry O'Sullivan?
Good morning.
Morning.
My mom had a vision.
She's a Carmichael resident for 50 years.
Can you pull the microphones down a little bit?
Oh, sorry.
There you go. Thank you.
We better?
Yes.
Okay, good. She wanted bocce courts built in Carmichael Park, so she put up $5,000, which was a lot of money to her. And the project kind of just didn't go anywhere for a while. My brother and I have hosted an event, which we raised almost $5,000 towards this. The foundation of Carmichael Park, the Carmichael Park District has also donated funds. We really want this project to happen.
Thank you.
That's it.
Who can be against bocce ball? Come on. Thank you, thank you very much. I have no other slips for any items on the agenda. Is there anything that the board would like to question?
I do. I'd like to, the record to reflect, I'm recusing from items two and three.
Okay.
Potential conflict of interest. So, so the request to speak does work?
Yes, it does.
Oh, sorry.
Hers doesn't work.
Oh, okay. I assumed it was the whole thing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Any others?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Ms. Natoli. A couple of different items. If you could call item seven, please.
Seven?
Seven, okay. I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing.
I know, I'm not sure. Item seven, how's that?
Item seven is the notice of intended public auction of tax defaulted property and resolution authorizing the sale at public auction of tax defaulted property.
Okay. Thank you. First, I want to express the appreciation to Mr. Lamera and others in the Department of Finance for making sure we had clear copies of maps that showed the actual parcels that are ones that would come under the notice of intended public auction of tax defaulted property. And so I want to thank our staff for that. Thank you, Mr. Gale, too. I know you followed up on that as well. The question I have is, just maybe a quick refresher, when somebody's primary residence is being offered for a public auction, what the process we use? I know that in years past, we've had some discussion about not just the finance office or other officers that relate to the property transaction, but also what happens when, do we have social workers go out? Do we make contacts? What is the, what is the process we use when it's somebody's primary residence?
I'm going to have the Finance Director, Ben Lamera, come answer that.
Okay. Good morning, Ben Lamera, Director of Finance. I'm actually going to have Laura Jacobson from our Tax Collector's Office come up and walk through the steps.
Okay, thanks, Ben.
Of what we do with the primary residences.
Good morning. So, I reach out to Department of Human Assistance, their homeless programs staff, Department of Health Services, Senior and Adult Services, I work with the program manager there, and I also work with the Department of Behavioral Health Services to help identify any residents who might need assistance either during the process or after the process.
And just, Laura, again, this isn't the first time that, obviously, primary residents, but if somebody's home, and again, there are many years delinquent in taxes, and so obviously, there's a legal process here, but understanding what you just said, who you work with, what would be the approach, though? I mean, is it, you know, do you send a letter? Do we go knock on the door? Do we have persistent? Again, because there may be some folks who, again, knowing that their world is, you know, going to change dramatically, if they, you know, if they have their wits about them that, you know, what, so, kind of walk through, maybe give an example. Obviously, I know you've, in the years past, have worked to help people get placed, but, you know, oftentimes, there are situations that are beyond people's control, and they're, you know, facing the loss of what may have been their home for 30 or 40 years, from all I know.
Right. So, every January, our staff goes out and makes personal contact to every property that has a home or structure on it.
Yep.
And we try and contact the residents there and discuss what their options could be, how we could help them get through the process, or, and we get, we have resource guides we give out, and any information that they're asking about, we have those conversations. We also identify the people we think will have issues during or after the sale, and we give referrals to these other human assistants, health services and behavioral health services.
Okay. Maybe just maybe a little more pointed about, so, we make a referral, but in the case, say you have someone who's elderly, who may not be in the immediate harms way, but either there's not a clear understanding because of, you know, mental illness, or, you know, lack of cognition as it relates to what's transpiring here, and if there's not wherewithal with other family members, or any more money to redeem the back taxes, but, you know, even with your best efforts, if this, if that home goes to sell, someone's going to be a new owner, and then you have this potential, not potential, you have a displacement. And so, how do you cope with those situations, though? And again, I mean, that may not be a rare situation, but I trust that it does happen, so just give me a little more, a little more idea kind of around, maybe even a situation where this occurred without, you know, identifying anybody, but...
Right. It is a rare occasion, because primary residents tend to stay on the list for several years while we're working with the residents to get loans or other financing options or finding another place to live.
Okay, so, again, again, the key point you just made, then, that we work with folks, is even if they're on the list, doesn't mean necessarily they're going to be sold, although I think in a marketplace where, you know, residences and housing is, you know, such great demand that, you know, there are those, obviously, looking to, you know, acquire homes and repair them, either for their own use or for rental, whatever, so, and again, maybe the last question on this piece, that with the primary residents, then, do, Ben, are you empowered, or Laura, to make the judgment to pull it off the list? If you understand the extending, some extending ways and circumstances, I guess, you know...
Yes, we are.
Okay.
And that's a discussion we have with Carlos and Ben. When we're getting closer to the auction, we, at that point, identified the primary residents during our visits in January. And then we also send letters again in January, reminding them that they're...
Yeah, and again, I recognize, you know, written communication, that's important, that's public notice, and it's a notice to people and so forth, but it's that personal contact, and again, I wasn't questioning that you do that, but I just think it's important to know, because, you know, when I see some new ones being added to the list, they're not in my district, but I, you know, I can recognize that's somebody's home, somebody who's occupying that under whatever circumstances, and taxes haven't been paid, so they're delinquent on those, so, okay, well, that, I appreciate that, that helps, and I know that you're very sensitive about the folks and what their situation might be, so, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's all I had on that. I've had one other item, Mr. Chair, but I don't know if there's any other questions on this item.
Are there any questions on that item?
Nope.
Okay, yeah. And then just the other item would be item 26, if you could call it real quickly, please.
Okay, good, okay. Ben?
We have another question on that item.
There is, I think you called item number 11. It's property owned by the Homeowners Association. Do you want the APN number or the item number?
No, actually, we have been taking a look at that, that particular parcel and the outstanding bills.
Well, it just mentioned two years, so is it, they haven't paid property taxes since 2011, or is it just 11 and 12?
So...
That I got.
Right. There were, there are outstanding property tax bills that go back to 2011, 12, and 12, 13, and there appears to be an error in there, and so we're going back and addressing that issue.
Okay, so...
That item will actually be removing from this list.
Oh, you're removing that by yourself?
Yes.
Okay. What kind of error, if I may ask?
It looks like it's an incorrect assessment. It was showing up as Sacramento County Stormwater Utilities, and we're, from what we can tell, it looks like an incorrect assessment.
Okay, it has quite a few structures on it, or what seem to be structures, and...
Actually, it's a, it's a common area. The structures are, are owned by, by actual property owners, and then the common area is the parking lot and, like, the landscaping around the areas.
So, is it a mobile home park or something?
No, it looks like either townhouses?
Wow.
Or apartment complex.
Yeah, so...
Right.
Those are all townhouses, and...
Those aren't, those aren't, that's not included in that parcel. There's, the parcel actually surrounds those. It's, it's a common area...
So, is it a land lease or something?
In that area.
Is it a land lease?
It is, it's not a land lease, so it, it, it is townhouses, and then there is a parking lot, and it looks like the grass area that surrounds the structures. So, the structures are individually owned, and then the common area is what they share. The parking lot, the, the grass area, probably the fences, the gates, et cetera.
Didn't Senator Feinstein have something like this happen a few years ago, where the city foreclosed on the common area on her house around her, in her neighborhood?
Yeah.
So, you're foreclosing on the grass and the asphalt?
We're not foreclosing.
You're not going to?
We're calling this from the list.
I don't think we want to be selling that property, if anyone would buy it. Okay.
Not at this point.
Okay, so how long will you pull it off? And what will you do about it?
Actually, there, once we address the issues with those assessments, the whole, the property will be removed from the list.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I was still waiting. Item 26, I was, if I could just, very quickly.
Sorry.
Item 26, retroactive authorization to take necessary steps to apply for and accept 2018 Proposition 68 groundwater planning grant funding of $750,000 in the Casumnes groundwater sub-basin, and to approve the appropriation adjustment request for $750,000.
Okay. I wanted to just pull this, because I, one, I want to thank our staff for their ongoing work in the basin. As noted in staff report, we're working with several, including folks from Amador County, but within, within the county, water and irrigation districts on developing the plan, the groundwater sustainability plan for that area. This is the second of two grants, and I know that Michael Peterson and Kerry Schmitz and Linda Dorn and others have been working very closely with folks in the area as relates to both the planning, but obviously, obviously, the necessary preparation leading up to when the law requires to actually have a groundwater sustainability plan, and I think this is an important step. Again, I have no problem with the retroactivity. I know it was a short deadline, and I'm, you know, I'm very, very supportive. I did want to ask, though, and maybe this is for Nav, Nav, I think it's probably time, shortly after the first of the year, for us to have the board, if there's agreement here, to have a, a update, a workshop, maybe on groundwater, I mean, the months are marching forward, we're working very hard with partners, but this has certainly broad implications for the county and for water users throughout the county. Obviously, in this case, it's focused on the southern part, the southern, eastern part of the counties, Sacramento County, the western part of Amador County, but I would ask if we could maybe have a, at least a workshop or some report, and some staff presentations to the board, and working through our, our current chair and incoming chair to see that we get that on, maybe in the February to March timeframe, if possible.
Yeah, we'll look into it.
Okay, good, but I support the item. Thanks very much for the time to speak to it.
Thank you.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. I have a statement on item 10, please.
Item 10, approve the retroactive reappointment of 19 initial members and appoint, appointment of three new members to the Steering Committee of the Reduction of African-American Child Deaths.
So, first, I want to take the opportunity to, to thank those members of the permanent steering committee for their service, and I'd also like to make a request, I guess, of the CEO's office, so that he can direct the appropriate executive staff to, sometime near the beginning of the year, give me a briefing, please, on what we're doing to actively recruit for that steering committee. That was something that I thought was left absent in the board letter.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we also have a public speaker card for item number 10, so Frederick Gale. Morning, sir.
Good morning, Frederick Gale, 7336 Hurley, North Highlands. I'm probably an African, Ethiopian American of that sort, but I find number 10 rather insulting to me, really. I mentioned before, those who have read Alison Davis, American dilemma, is this so difficult for us to solve? As a kid, probably, one of the poorest countries, a county in the state of Alabama, and I think we had about five or six, five beta capitals from that little town or whatever, but why is this so difficult for us to solve? Do we have the wrong committee, or the wrong people, or what is it? Bed wires, I can remember, and every little place didn't have a doctor. Maybe we need to get another committee, get a new one who can solve some problems, whether UC Berkeley, or what have you. But it's something strange, but over and over, we invented the hydrogen bomb, et cetera. No polio, I grew up, and FDR, we, pennies and what have you. I think we could solve this if we had a different group to solve the problem. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Fred. Thank you, Mr. Gale.
You bet.
Supervisor Serna.
Sure, I'd like to respond to Mr. Gale's comments.
Yeah.
While I appreciate his enthusiasm on the subject and interest in solving the problem, I would respectfully disagree that the inference that we're not actively trying to do so isn't actually producing the results that we set for ourselves nearly, what, eight, almost nine years ago. And I just would remind him and the viewing audience, those who are in chambers, that we are making the kind of progress that we hoped for, in terms of not only the reduction in the number of real deaths in the African-American childhood population, but also in the disparities. And certainly would invite him to participate if he feels that there needs to be some amended participation, and whether it be the Steering Committee or the broader Black Child Legacy Campaign. I think there's a lot of room for community members to participate and contribute, it's a big tent, but again, I think it's one of, one of the things that this county can be extremely proud of in terms of trying to tackle this issue, and quite frankly, it's another reminder for me to explain that this is not only succeeding in Sacramento County, but it's also being viewed nationally as a model for other counties. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any, I have, that's all I see from the board, and I have no more speaker cards, so with that, I will take a motion on the consent calendar. So, move. Moved by Director, or, sorry, Supervisor Natoli, seconded by the Chair. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Next item, please.
Can I just say, before we go on, I want to thank the members of the Carmichael Parks Foundation for coming out today to support the amendment to their master plan. Nice to see you here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, item 31, you're acting as the Board of Supervisors and Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento. This is the Mutual Housing on the Boulevard Project Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing, approval of tax-exent bonds and loan commitment.
Good morning, Chair Kennedy and members of the board, Ann Nichols, Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. The Mutual Housing on the Boulevard Project is requesting approval of a $50 million mortgage revenue bonds issuance and a $6.9 million loan commitment for the acquisition, construction, and permanent financing of the project. Following this item, the Director of Homeless Initiatives will present the board with this project as it relates to the Sacramento County and SHRA jointly issued request to partner on No Place Like Home developments to prepare for funding round two. Mutual Housing on the Boulevard is a new construction project located on the vacant site at 7351 Stockton Boulevard. There are 127 1, 2, and 3-bedroom units, including 67 homeless permanent supportive housing units which were awarded project-based vouchers from SHRA, and 58 workforce housing units. The developer is Mutual Housing California. Mutual Housing Management will manage the property. A minimum of 20 hours per week of onsite resident services will be provided by Mutual Housing California. Supportive services will be provided by Department of Human Services and Lutheran Social Services. In closing, staff is requesting approval of the Mutual Housing on the Boulevard Project. Mutual Housing California representatives are here. SHRA staff is available to address any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board? Thank you. We do have some public speakers. We have Polly Wonder Stiles. Good morning.
Good morning. I will make a very brief statement. I would just like to thank the county for their support. We have worked very closely with the county homeless coordinator and also the Department of Behavioral Health Services, and we look forward to the success of this project and appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Andrea Noble.
Good morning, Andrea Noble. I'm also a resident at Mutual Housing. I worked on Proposition 2, and I thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. Any other, I have no more members of the public. Supervisor Peters?
I just want to say congratulations on getting this project done. It's, these are not easy to pull all the separate parts together, and thank Supervisor Kennedy and SHRA and others that are helping produce this housing for low-income people.
Thank you very much, and I will say that this is an, of the five years I've been here, this is one of the most exciting votes I'll cast in the five years. This is a great project, but I also would like to point out that, I'd like to look at the county considering, these projects take too long. We have considered a homeless or a housing shelter emergency in Sacramento County, and there has to be some way that we can fast-track projects like this. I think, I don't know if you look at some kind of a threat, well, actually, all projects, but particularly projects like this that target a population that we all know is an emergency. You know, nine months, two years, three years, I realize that there's federal hoops we have to jump through, and there's all of those things, but if we are the ones that are slowing the process, we being the county, whether it's planning or any other department, then we need to get our stuff together and, and make this a priority, and see that we can fast-track these somehow.
I'd just say, I 100% agree, the courtyard inn took multiple years, and from year to year, it wasn't, we weren't positive it was going to get done, we were having to wait. It isn't just the county, we should check that, but really, we need to work with our state and federal representatives on moving this process ahead, faster.
Absolutely.
It's hard to sit here in these chairs and get beat on for not producing enough housing when, by the very jurisdictions that are causing it to go so slowly.
Yes, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions, comments for the board? Is there a motion? I will move.
Second.
We have motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you, congratulations. Next item, please.
Okay, for item 32, you're acting as the Board of Supervisors. This is the authorization to participate in the No Place Like Home program for the metro at 7th and Mutual Housing on the Boulevard Projects.
Good morning. Do we have a PowerPoint? My name's Cindy Kavanaugh, I'm County Director of Homeless Initiatives. I'm here on behalf of a partnership with SHRA, my office, and Behavioral Health Services and the Department of Health Services. We have been working to create a pipeline of permanent supportive housing developments to, to jumpstart, if you will, to incentivize developments by giving them our coordination and, and working very actively toward, to getting these projects in that pipeline of funding from various agencies. I'm here this morning to recommend two development applications for round two of the competitive state No Place Like Home program, which will result in 105 No Place Like Home units, and I'll talk more about those, and a total of 277 housing units. This is a joint effort, as I mentioned, and I would like to thank Jane Ann Zachary of the Division of Behavioral Health Services, and Christine Weichert and her staff of SHRA. As a reminder, the No Place Like Home program was approved in 2016. It allocates $2 billion in bond funding for permanent supportive housing for people who are experiencing homelessness, chronic homelessness, or who are at risk of chronic homelessness, and also living with a serious mental illness and in need of mental health and/or substance use services. We, I do note that it's a bond that is repaid from the diversion of 7% of Mental Health Services Act money that would otherwise come to the county for services, and in exchange for that diversion, we commit to these projects for 20 years of behavioral health services. I was being a little sarcastic. So, I want to also remind us that we were successful at the state with our round one supportive housing developments. In June of this year, we received 9.9 million in state No Place Like Home funding for these two developments, and we also awarded one, excuse me, 2.8 of non-competitive funds that the county controls for a total of 12.7 million in No Place Like Home funds investing in these developments. These will total 87 No Place Like Home units and a total of 180 permanent supportive housing units. The first project is in Citrus Heights, called Sunrise Point, and the second one is Capital Park Hotel in the city and downtown Sacramento. You will see the status that these projects are seeking 9% tax credits. That is what was just referenced as one of those things that may take at least a couple of rounds to compete and receive those very critical financing credits. We start our process well in advance, over the course of this year, of the state issuing its NOFA. We have to do that, so we are ready to apply, that the developments are in the shape we need them to be in, and so we, we did our local solicitation in April, we received the two applications in May, and then we continue to work with the developments and refine the developments, once we see the state NOFA, which was not issued until the end of September. We're recommending projects today, we'll submit them to the state in the beginning of January, and we expect to know of awards mid-2020. Our local process is intended to incentivize these developments by three entities working together. We mirror our selection on what the state, how the state... We mirror our selection on what the state, how the state selects. I will note that we expect this round to be more competitive than the first round. That's often the case at the state, and these are not, nothing too unusual here. The threshold is eligible kind of development and eligible sponsor, financially feasible. I'm not going to go through the whole list, and on the competitive side, we really want to see projects that are ready and that have leveraged both development financing and rental operating subsidies. Key on that point is that these projects have received commitments from SHRA for housing choice vouchers, which makes them competitive on that particular item. Going to briefly go over each of these development applications and recognize and thank the development sponsors, both, well, I'll go over that, they are in the audience, both for Metro at Seventh and Mutual Housing on the Boulevard. The sponsor here is USA Properties and Jamboree Housing Corporation. It's located at the corner of Seventh and F in downtown Sacramento. Both projects will serve families and individuals. This project will have a combination of studios, one and two bedrooms. They will be serving, in the No Place Like Home units, folks in all of the categories. You'll see the requirements listed here, no less than 40% for chronically homeless individuals, no more than 30% for those at risk. That's primarily folks needing institutionalized care, and the remainder would be experiencing homelessness, all of whom have a serious mental illness. The services, Ann went over the kind of services. It's, it's a little complicated, but in each case, there's three plans. Resident services for everyone, No Place Like Home services provided by Department of Health Services, Division of Behavioral Health, and then for the non-No Place Like Home supportive housing units, there is another service plan operated by the development sponsor or their partners. This particular project has a new kind of tax credit financing called hybrid. It's a 4%, 9% combo. There's actually two developments for the legal and financing purposes, but it functions as one development, and Attachment Three contains project details on this project. This project is requesting $12.5 million, I think I mentioned. These are co-applications, which is different for the state between the county, the county is applying along with the development sponsor.
Okay, Cindy, I'm going to interrupt you for a minute. Susan Peters.
Thank you. Cindy, I wonder if you could explain that hybrid tax credit? I know that may not be your specialty, but the tax credits are a really important element, as I've discovered on a couple of projects.
Yes.
And 9% being the one that developers want most, and sometimes they'll have to skip around when they get four, but you said this is a combination, so...
I could attempt to explain the benefit and the value and why this was created, but I would like to look to the development sponsor, and I see Darren Bobowski is coming up, so I'll have him explain it. I think it's a, it's an important question and thing to understand.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the Board. Darren Bobowski with USA Properties Fund. First of all, I want to thank you for your consideration of this project. We think it's a great project to help as part of solving the homeless issue in the city of Sacramento and the county of Sacramento. The hybrid 9-4 is a fairly new structure that the Tax Credit Committee allows, and what it does is you break the project into two separate financing structures, a 9% and a 4%, the, with two separate ownerships, but what the Tax Credit Committee has done is in order to incentivize the more efficient use of the 9 and 4% project, they actually give you, let you take your subsidy from your 4% project and count it towards your 9% tiebreaker. So it gives you a really high tiebreaker and makes it much more likely to get funded on the 9% project. So it's, it's a more, what the Tax Credit Committee is trying to do is, larger projects are more efficient to build and to operate, so they're trying to incentivize that while still using the limited 9% program that gets you more equity into your project.
How long has this program been around?
They've been doing it, I think, two years.
Has it been successful?
Yeah, usually the hybrid projects almost always win in the tiebreaker, which is what it comes down. Everybody's maximum points always comes down to a tiebreaker, and by using the subsidy on the 4% side to count to your, toward your 9% project, it gives you a really high tiebreaker and, and almost ensures a success.
And then, a little more in the detail area, you said you'd break the project into two pieces. Could you briefly explain that?
Sure. So, we're going to do a commercial condominium, so the building is, looking at the building, it looks like one, one building, one project, and then like a condominium, different parts of the building are owned by different ownership groups and financed as separate projects. But from the outside, it looks like one project, it operates like one project with one management company, which is sharing of expenses.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Frost?
Cindy, you were talking about this, the idea that the No Place Like Home is, is dedicate, these, this project is going to require 40% for seriously mentally ill? Did I understand that correctly?
55 will be No Place Like Home units for seriously mentally ill. That is then broken down into categories of qualifying under homeless, chronically homeless, or at risk of chronic homeless, but 55, and I don't know what percentage that is of the 150, are No Place Like Home.
So, when I think of seriously mentally ill, I think of someone who is suffering from, maybe a small percentage of the population, suffering from maybe schizophrenia or borderline or, you know, complicated with drug addiction, and in many cases, those are the people who are chronically homeless because they are not able to understand that they have a problem and they are afraid of the, they may even be afraid of the solution for fear that they don't understand that they even, what they need. And so it's difficult for that kind of a person to make that decision to, to choose to participate in something like this. So my question, because this is something that comes to my office, I, I have constituents who have children or grandchildren who, they're trying to figure out how to get them, how to make them come to treatment, and they won't come. Does this, and, and I think that's a big part of the problem we have with the high-cost chronic homeless in the emergency rooms. Are those the kind of people who are in these places, or are these just the people who are there by choice? How are we, how are these people coming to this opportunity?
So, I will ask, I will look to Department of Health Services if they want to add, but these, all of the tenants come, of course, voluntarily. They are identified either through many outreach mechanisms where they are engaged in behavioral health services already, or, and still experiencing homelessness, or they are in an institution and engaged in behavioral health services. The first step likely is that engagement, whether it's from the street or from a shelter situation, but they're in some, they have been identified as persons experiencing serious mental illness, are likely already engaged at some level in behavioral health, and, and or identified through the outreach programs and identified in the coordinated entry system operated by Sacramento Steps Forward. So it's not one way, there's a range of, of folks, but certainly the, the, the goal is for our engagement and outreach programs to work to get folks on that, on that path of engagement so that they can then take advantage of this opportunity. Many, the folks working in the behavioral health services, the providers are experienced in that, and I would say that has not, I mean, while we know it's still a challenge to engage, we are not short of folks that have been engaged and can be housed in these developments.
Do, do we have, and I'll end with this, because this isn't specifically to this issue, but this is a concern to me that there might be, oh, I don't know if we have a specific program that's reaching for these, this one small population that is probably the biggest cost to the, to the county by virtue of their, you know, their use of emergency first responder services and emergency room, and there's no place to take them, and we can't take them anyway legally. Are we, how are we, I guess I'd like, I don't want you to answer now, I would like to have you think about this and talk to me about this. I, I'm interested in finding out how we can help those people, because I know that people who choose to come into these, this is a huge, wonderful opportunity, but there are those who are not able to even choose to come in, because in their mind, they don't, they don't understand.
And we would, I think...
Those are the ones I'd like to figure out how we can reach.
We, we would love to share with you more deeply, because there is a variety of outreach ways that behavioral health services outreaches and engages. The most recent is having an access clinician in the shelters. So there are numerous, and there's street outreach, et cetera, so working with the Division of Behavioral Health would be happy to, to give you more detail on that.
This is exciting. Thank you.
And, and it's a good time to mention that the services provided by the Division of Behavioral Health are very robust. They are wraparound services once they are in housing, and many, many kinds of mental health services, but beyond that, connecting to the community and connecting to health and, and many other wraparound services for the residents. Ann covered much of the details on mutual housing on the Boulevard, which we are happy for this development in the unincorporated area of Sacramento. 50 No Place Like Home, 17 additional supportive housing for a total of 127. I won't go over the population targets and the services which are similar. The project financing is a 4% tax credit, and Ann also covered that. I did want to make one correction to the project detail in Attachment Six. We are requesting a total of 14.8 million in No Place Like Home competitive funds. 12.3 million is correct for one portion, but we are also requesting a capitalized operating subsidy reserve, known as a COSER, in the amount of approximately 2.5 million to meet funding operating shortfalls that, that exist in the project. So I did want to make that correction. We're, we're gonna, I do want to say this is very exciting for the team that worked on it, working with the development sponsors. We are very pleased for the, maybe midway in this process of getting these developments on the ground. We will submit the application in the beginning of January. Again, expect awards in June. We do not yet know about round three No Place Like Home funding, but we are already talking and working on, working on that from our local perspective. With that, I'm happy to take any additional questions.
Are there any other questions of the Board? I do have two speaker slips. Holly Wunder Stiles, followed by Andrea Noble. I'm assuming you're speaking in support?
Absolutely. I just have a brief comment. Again, I appreciate the support, and I, I'd like to speak to the timing a little bit. There are a number of factors that cause project timelines to be drawn out, but one of the key ones is funding, and so it really was the state voters that approved Proposition Two, that broke the logjam for this project, and is enabling us to move forward. And of course, the county commitment enables us to apply for those funding, so it's really, we're really excited to be participating in a Prop Two project and appreciate your support in helping us get there.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll clarify my comments earlier, and that's that I'm not pointing fingers at any organization or group as far as slowing the process down. I just, for those things that we as a county can control, I think we need to take a look at and see what we can do, if we can do anything better. Andrea, you're up.
Good morning again, I'm Andrea, and I do think we should fast-track some of this so we can get the people, the help that they need, the housing, because I'm a resident at Mutual Housing, a lot of people have come in, people have changed our lives, so we need to figure out how to fast-track this, and I'm in support of it. Thank you.
Supervisor Nataoli.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Since there's been some commentary here about timing and so forth, I guess I'm curious about, on page five, the, next to the last bullet, why the county commitment would only be for 18 months? Again, recognizing the timeframes, the funding rounds, all the things that have to go together, that, that seems like a very short amount of time. I know they can come back to the Board resolution, Board for another resolution, but as I've been told many times before, that there is a cost of processing that, those items to the Board and so forth, so why would we only make this good for 18 months? Why not 24, 36, 48? Again, you want to get the housing delivered, but if this is, all that's gone into this , then it doesn't make any sense to me that we're going to say that, you know, a year and a half from now, that if things aren't in place, you got to come back and go through this all over again. That doesn't make sense.
Certainly, we can come back to extend that. I think the intent is to really create that incentive to get these projects funded and moving. If there are other developments that are more ready at that point, we'd like to reassess. So it really is in that broad interest of, if something is not able to be funded, maybe it needs to be reworked, we at least want to look at it. So it gives us a check-in at that 18-month mark, and certainly, we're not going to walk away from something that is well on its way or needs to be tweaked in some way, and we'll come back to this Board.
Okay. I appreciate the explanation, but I guess I've still, I'm curious why you have to have an expiration. You know, all the things you just said, obviously, are built into what brings it here today to the process you would use. I mean, it wouldn't be, you know, a forever commitment, but it just seems to me that 18 months, as things go, seems to be a fairly short amount of time. I guess it'd be nice if you delivered the project in 18 months, but, anyway, Christine?
Right. So the 18-month also matches the SHRA loan commitment gap financing that you took action on earlier in the meeting, the 6.9 million dollars, and we do that because it allows for up to three rounds of 9% tax credit projects, and we find that, because they have two rounds a year, so that's three rounds in 18 months, we find that if a project hasn't been successful as a 9% tax credit project in that 18 months or the three rounds, then we probably relook, need to look at it and maybe restructure it in some way, so we'd be back before you in any case after 18 months. We've just found over the years, that's a good timeframe to relook at a project of need-be.
Okay, so when folks go forward, recognizing what you and Cindy have just explained, Christine, then there's no hesitancy, because again, looking at all the ability to compete well and to have, you know, improvement on, on tiebreakers, as was talked about in the last project, then having an 18-month commitment period doesn't in any way diminish the competitiveness of it by saying, well, you know, their own, county's only in for, you know, you're driving, obviously, for a timeframe to deliver, and what you just explained, but then that doesn't become, somehow, somebody looking at it and saying, well, the county's only good for 18 months on this and, you know, run the clock out on them or whatever. So I, so I'm curious, again, you're much more knowledgeable, both of you and all of you, on the process that we use here, but...
I've never found that to be the case, and again, our goal after 18 months is to look at it and see how we can help the project succeed if it hasn't so far.
Right, no, I accept all that, that's fine. Again, it's consistent with, you know, with, you know, what you've explained and what's in the report, but, all right, that's all. Questions, Audrey? Thanks.
Okay. Are you done?
I am done.
Okay. Any other questions of the Board? I have no more speaker slips. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
We have a motion second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. We do have one speaker slip off agenda, which we'll take right now. Frederick Gale. Mr. Gale.
Well, I have an open invitation for this Board to visit my area, North Highlands, and I want to thank you for being such an exemplary government body. I always enjoy coming to the county meetings, and you set the standard for that, and over the years, it has always been the best, and there have been other bodies that become circus or what have you, but you've been diligent, take care of business, and if you get a chance to listen to some of Aaron Copeland's, Oh To The Common Man, our town, and you'll see what I feel like when I come to these meetings. And thank you very much for the great job you've done, and the best of everything for you. you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gale. Thank you, Mr. Gale. And we too appreciate your commitment to our community and your eloquence.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, if I could, just, again, I appreciate, certainly, as we've all said here, Mr. Gale's comments, but I would just say to Fred that people here participating in the process, I think, helps us to be better at what we do, and certainly appreciate his diligence over the years. He's sat through many, many sessions, and again, I think that, you know, the more interaction, the better from the standpoint of decisions that we are called upon to make. So I want to thank Fred. Wish you a happy holidays, Mr. Gale.
Thank you very much.
Okay. With that, normally, I would take appointments, but your chair left them on his desk, so we will do that quickly in the afternoon. Is there any other questions of the board?
Are we having closed session now?
We are having closed session?
Yes, we are.
Yes. So we will recess and go into closed session and reconvene at two o'clock. Call back to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Supervisors Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
We still have our technical issues?
Yes.
Okay. Next item, please.
Did you want to take your nominations and get those out of the way, or do you want to hold off?
No, let's wait.
Okay.
We have people here.
Yeah. Okay. Item thirty-three is the Community Planning Advisory Council's review and comment on an ordinance amending the Sacramento County Code Title II, Chapter 2.30, to delete references to four obsolete community planning commissions, and Chapter 2.36 related to the Community Planning Advisory Councils, an ordinance amending the Sacramento County Zoning Code, specifically Chapters Six and Seven, and a resolution rescinding individual bylaws for the CPACs and replacing them with a common set of bylaws, and the environmental determination is exempt.
Good afternoon, members of the board. LeAnn Moffett, Planning Director. I did want to kick off this item with just a couple of remarks before I turn things over to Chris Bohuili, who will be doing the staff presentation today. But I wanted to kick it off by noting that throughout this process, starting with board members asking us to take the, a first comprehensive look at the Community Planning Advisory Councils, the first look we've done in many years that I'm aware of, perhaps even from their outset, there was recognition of the valuable work and service performed by each of the members of the CPACs. As noted in the board report, from the first board workshop held back in February of 2019 through the Planning Commission report, or through the Planning Commission hearing, there was a recognition that the Community Planning Advisory Council members are often on the front line. They're the first meeting where the public comes out and has the opportunity to hear about a project, and they can often bear the brunt of those initial community concerns and, and questions. Chris and I had the opportunity of visiting all fourteen Community Planning Advisory Councils through this process, and we just wanted to note their diligence in performing their function as we move forward with this item. So with those introductory remarks, I'm going to turn things over to Chris to give the staff presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Good afternoon, board members. This item, afternoon's item, is a workshop to seek direction on staff's proposal for a series of actions aimed at improving efficiency and providing consistency around the Community Planning Advisory Council's review process. Following today's workshop, staff will revise the policy documents, if needed, and return to the board to request approvals. As bit of background, this effort to improve upon the CPAC processes began over a year ago with supervisors requesting a workshop to discuss potential modifications to the CPAC community reviews. On February fifth, 2019, the board held a workshop and provided direction to staff to initiate code amendments. Although there were a range of opinions expressed during the workshop, staff proceeded with the main takeaways being to address the timeliness of community reviews, the voting practices, consistent and uniform administrative procedures, oversight of the CPACs, and lastly, ensuring that CPAC members are adequately trained to actively participate in meetings. In addition to the workshop, the request to revise procedures related to community reviews has come from the recent transition of clerking responsibilities to the, of the CPACs from planning to the clerk of the board's office, and their desire to have more uniform bylaws and operating procedures. Applicant stakeholder feedback has also been received to improve the review timelines and certainty in processing, and staff's review of new state law aimed at streamlining public review and approvals for housing projects. Following the February board workshop, staff developed an outline of a reform proposal based on board direction and staff's expertise in working on planning projects and community reviews. The resulting outline was presented in a review and comment forum to all fourteen CPACs from May through July 2019. A summary of the comments received during those meetings is included as Attachment Three to your report package. To summarize the conversations, CPAC members generally supported the need for administrative consistency. However, there were a number of spirited discussions about the proposed changes, including the desire to continue to vote on items, to be able to continue items where they felt that enough information was not provided, retaining the ability to elevate the hearing authority for projects receiving a denial vote from the CPAC, and also retaining the ability to file no-cost community appeals on any matter before them.
Sorry, Chris, could you go, what was the third one? I couldn't quite hear you. Continue items, elevate to...
Retain the ability to elevate the hearing authority from the zoning administrator to the planning commission on items that they recommend denial.
What was the one after that?
Retaining the ability to file a no-cost community appeal.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Uh-huh. In addition to the CPAC workshops, staff also met with other stakeholder groups to solicit input on the proposals. We met with staff from the Delta Protection Commission to ensure the proposal did not run afoul of their needs for community review. We met with the county's Environmental Justice Element Advisory Committee, specifically around the proposals to increase community notification by sending courtesy notices to tenants as well as property owners. Also, there were a number of meetings with the North State BIA, whose interests were in streamlining and ensuring certainty in process. On October twenty-eighth, the Planning Commission considered the package of ordinances and uniform set of bylaws that are included in this report. Sixteen members of the public provided testimony at the meeting, including representatives from the Casumnas CPAC, Delta MAC, BIA California YIMBY, and House Sacramento. Following deliberation, the Planning Commission recommended approval on a four-to-one vote of the package with the modification that CPACs be afforded one continuance at their discretion. I should note that that recommendation is not included in the package that is before Before I speak to the particulars of the, contained in the ordinance and the uniform bylaws, I wanted to summarize staff's opinion of the major changes contained in the package. First, the proposal limits the scope of CPAC review to items under planning's jurisdiction as referenced in the Development Code. Items outside planning's purview would still be able to be referred to CPACs by the Board of Supervisors. Second, planning and the clerk of the board's office would improve upon the training that CPAC members are receiving in order to ensure more productive meetings. Thirdly, continuances would be limited to instances where the applicant is requesting a continuance. This may occur where an applicant desires to work with neighbors to address issues in hopes of a favorable CPAC recommendation. Fourthly, the CPACs will vote on advisory project referrals. A sample is included in your agenda, in your report package. The referral will include support or opposition for the requested entitlements, as well as comments, suggestions, and requested conditions. Lastly, the proposal retains no-cost community interest appeals, but does remove the bumping of items from the zoning administrator to the Planning Commission.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Natoli.
Just a question or clarification on the last bullet. Again, that's staff recommendation. I guess I'm curious, and Chris, I don't know that you were with Planning Department in 2015. You have just come on board, but as this board deliberated many code changes and a total revision, comprehensive revision to the zoning code, I will just say, at least from this board member's recollection, and certainly some of the input I recall giving at the time, as we met with individual board members, but also as we deliberated in these chambers, that one of the items that, and I'll just, I want to make this clear, and I was, I'm kind of curious as to how you arrived at this particular recommendation, that in the, I think, consideration of efficiency, of less cost to applicants, to a streamlined approach that may not require items to go to the Planning Commission that were previously required to go to the Planning Commission or board in some cases, got bumped down. One of the safeguards, in my word, not necessarily anybody else's in the chambers, was that, you know, on those rare occasions when you would have an item that would, had been bumped down from the Planning Commission that would not get to the Board of Supervisors, to the elected representatives of the people of this county on a, you know, on appeal of community-wide interest. So how was it, again, you know, that was backdrop, and we made significant changes in the zoning code to bump down items that typically aren't of a controversial nature or contentious, that, you know, and they're generally not around housing, so that's not, you know, that's not the issue here, but there are use permits in a lot of cases. And now, basically, that ability for CPACs to get the ability to get that to, it's not just about an automatic bump, it's just that you, in some cases, those would never see the, these chambers from the standpoint of the Board of Supervisors. They might get to the Planning Commission. So how was it that staff, in your review with councils, and obviously taking into consideration what you did, board members' comments last February, how did you get to that, to that point that that's part of the recommendation, and why, I guess? I'm going to, I'm going to ask you that, because you heard feedback from folks about that, so...
We certainly heard feedback related to the bumping. I will note that in addition to use permits that were, that were referred from, or delegated from the Planning Commission to the zoning administrator, the other items, and actually the more frequent items that have been appealed recently are special development permits related to accessory dwelling units and setbacks for commercial projects. So the zoning administrator hears a number of items, and in putting the proposal together, staff evaluated what, what would be the appropriate course of action for those types of projects, and whether or not it would be appropriate to have it be an appeal to the, or have it be bumped to the Planning Commission and then on to the, to the board for items such as accessory dwelling unit, special development permits, or building setbacks for commercial projects related to special development permits.
And I don't know, yeah, I don't know that we've had any appeals coming from this board that I can recall as relates to the accessory dwelling units. That whole body of laws relates to housing, obviously, is changing, and it'll change more dramatically even come January first of next year. But I guess, to your point about special development permits, one of the other things that we did, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, in that zoning code update, was that we eliminated a lot of the exceptions, the variances, deviations from requirements, and bundled them in a special development permit so that the precision that went with specific items that might otherwise be, you know, dealt with at another level, they all got bundled up there, and that was, again, built into our code. But now, if I understand your explanation is, is that the ability of the community councils to get those to the board, again, it may not be all the items that are embodied in that package, is going to basically be cut off at the legs because, you know, with what's being proposed by staff, at least as I understand what you've explained, it would not be able to come back to the Board of Supervisors. Basically, we have delegated the authority away via amendments we did four years ago, but still gave the safeguard, in my view, that allowed the communities, you know, community-wide interest, to get it back to the board, and now we're saying, uh-uh, that door's shut.
That is correct with the current proposal.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Frost.
I just wanted to ask a question regarding that. My, my understanding was that our whole goal here is to figure out how we can refine the process and set protocols so we can create some efficiencies in our timelines. And so, when you're having the advisory recommendation appeal to the zoning appeals admin, rather than the Planning Commission, if the, if for some reason they want to, can they then, if the resulting decision at the zoning appeals is not what they like, can they then appeal it to the, to a higher level?
No.
But they cannot...
Currently, they can. So, so let's take an example of an item that is, that would normally be heard by the zoning administrator. If it currently, under the current code, if it goes to the CPAC, they recommend denial, it automatically bumps to the Planning Commission, and if they also file a free no, or a no-cost community appeal, once the Planning Commission makes a determination on it, then it goes to the Board of Supervisors on appeal. What the proposal is in the package is that items that would normally be heard by the Planning Commission can continue to be appealed via no-cost appeal by the CPACs. However, items that would, are heard by the zoning administrator, they're no longer able to be bumped to the Planning Commission. If they want to file an appeal on the decision by the zoning administrator, it would just go to the Planning Commission, who does business as the Board of Zoning Appeals, and then that would complete the, the review of that particular project. And it wouldn't be able to be appealed to the board.
So, but those kind of items that would be appealed to the zoning administrator are items that are specific to zoning laws, and so that is something normal for the zoning administrator to manage? Is that correct? I mean, it's not like they're, they're not getting as good of a review. It's still going to be based on policy and regulations, and it, it's going to happen in a more timely manner. Is that a correct assumption?
It's correct to say that by, by only having one appeal rather than it being bumped and then an appeal, that it will improve the timeliness of the reviews. Yes.
Thank you.
Supervisor Serna.
Thanks. Forgive me ahead of time here if you plan to touch on this in the balance of your presentation, Chris, but I think this is probably the right time to chime in, to express at least my, my consideration, my concern on this item, and that is, first and foremost, a sense of balance, and the balance being, how do we have a process that's fair to applicants, certainly fair to the communities where projects are proposed in terms of the community's review, but a process that is balanced also with the fact that we're in unprecedented period in California history in terms of our housing crisis. So I know that efficient, the term efficiency's been referenced liberally here already in your presentation, but do we have an idea vis-à-vis examples of certain types of entitlements that would be sought by a project applicant that would be, could be expedited based on staff's recommendation today?
I think certainly the accessory dwelling units that I mentioned, given their need for entitlement, I will acknowledge that we are in the process of unpacking the ADU legislation as well as SB 330 to really understand how all of that new state law impacts the timeliness of reviews. I do believe that there are entitlements that for one reason or the other take longer to work through the process, that some of the recommended changes in this proposal package could...
Yeah, I think we all acknowledge that no two entitlements sought are the same, right? I mean, there's, there's a nuance around it in terms of community disposition on, on what's being sought by a project applicant, but in, you know, I'm thinking in terms of, like, density adjustments, those types of things where the county is being asked to approve a project that really strikes at what we're trying to achieve to address the housing crisis, my, you know, the lens I'm looking through is that one, in terms of, in other words, efficiency for me is going to be defined and determined by a process that is not just faster, but equally fair to all parties, but that helps us achieve that broader... to, to all parties, but that helps us achieve that broader, community-wide objective of, of enhancing housing availability. So, that's what I, you know, that's what I'm interested in, in terms of the consideration of staff's recommendation. So, I think the more you can speak to that in the balance of your presentation, the better.
Okay.
Thank you.
Supervisor Peters.
Thank you, as long as you paused.
Yes.
I would like to know through, as you discuss this document, how the legislature, the governors act on housing being limited to five meetings of any kind, how that impacted what your recommendation is. And, and that, to me, is something that has to be considered with, I mean, just our normal process is three or four.
Right.
And if we have any continuances, or some other reason to bring something back, we start bumping up against a legal limit. So, there may be some of this that we don't have much choice about.
That's right. I, I don't have that in the, in my formal remarks, so I'll address it now. We did include an example in, in the staff report package about the hearings that a project would normally have to go to, and that includes about five for a normal housing project, a tentative map, for example, that would go to the Planning Commission. We are, as I mentioned, continuing to work on understanding what SB 330 means and what constitutes a meeting under SB 330, and that certainly will.
Just, just pause there, I'm, I'm not sure that there could be a lot of confusion over what constitutes a meeting. I mean, how much time are you going to spend at that?
There, there has been some discussion with the state about what does constitute meetings as opposed to hearings. And so, for example, as part of the, the county's development process, we have a project review committee where different county departments and, and agencies provide comments and conditions for projects, and whether or not that constitutes a meeting or hearing under SB 330 is something that we're.
So, it is, it is not defined in the legislation?
It's not clear.
Okay. Now, think about that, thanks.
Supervisor Nataulie.
Yeah, and just to piggyback that, because that example's on page 10 of the staff report, and since you're, you know, addressing it in light of the previous question, I guess I'm, one, piggybacking off the comment that was made at the Planning Commission by one of the commissioners, was is that, you know, what we're looking at here, obviously, in the packages before us today, is the early part of the review process, the community process, the community engagement involvement process, and yet, we as a county, again, I'm not saying these aren't bad additions, but in, you know, we've added this early project review committee, we've added design review, again, by ordinance, by choice, by, you know, I think, clear deliberation, and then PRC, final condition review. But we're, we're chopping at this at the end as if the community council piece of it, the community engagement piece of it, is the problem here, and it's not. Now, it doesn't mean that five doesn't mean five, but I think, you know, to the commissioner's statement, but as I've thought about that, and then I think the other paragraph is important here because of our county ordinances, that, you know, when you look at references to the Parkway Advisory Committee, to the Agricultural Advisory Committee, the Bicycle Advisory Committee, you know, the engagement on a specific project may be such that that would be a proper referral. And so, I think that, you know, to come at this, again, from the perspective that somehow the community councils are the logjam, and I'm not saying that's what you came at in the process, they're early on, but they've been an integral part of the process for over 40 years in this county. Some of these other additions are very recent, or they're iterations of a subdivision review committee, or things that we want relative to design standards because of this wholesale revision that we did of the zoning code. And I guess, again, with that backdrop, Chris, my question to you is, is that, in looking at that, and obviously, your recommendation does not embody what the commission could agree upon that night, was that there ought to be a continuance, and so, and this references specifically housing projects, but there are a whole lot of other things, as I referenced a moment ago, although special development permits get bundled up, that, you know, community advisory councils and the county planning department and this body and other hearing bodies review. So, is there no distinguishing in your, in, in, in the, I guess, the assessment of the Planning Department on those matters? I mean, I, I hear the call for housing, I understand, you know, we, you know, we hear about it every day, and we recognize the need, but, you know, that's the example as used, but what about other processes, and we've tagged on to it? We, the county, this board, by adopting certain things, have now got three of the five, including the final hearing, but actually, which is called for here. So, I guess I'm curious, in your assessment, when you say no continuances, that's your recommendation, and that, you know, somehow the, you know, the logjam is occurring at the front end on this, I'm curious, particularly in light of these others, and these are obviously staff-supported, you know, where you guys are in staff engagement on these other committees, you, you may have citizens serving in some capacities in those, but...
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, the approach with the proposal in, in front of you for review and comment is an effort to address the, the CPAC process in terms of streamlining. There's certainly other work to be done in its entirety on development to ensure that, that the process is a bit streamlined, but what, what we focused on with this package before you is strictly on the CPAC process.
But I guess, to, back to the question that Supervisor Peters asked about the five meetings, and I guess any definition around that, and what comports for a meeting versus something else, you know, I, I don't see any attempt here, either with the building industry and/or with planning staff, to, to, at least in this example, to say, well, maybe there's some other efficiencies that could be found here so that we can maintain, I think, the, you know, the, the, the status and standing and what the community involvement is at the community advisory level, versus being that's the one that, you get one bite at it, with exceptional cases that are pointed out here, and that's it, versus, you know, something else that either we as the board created, certainly you'd have to bring a recommendation to us, but, you know, if those are important to project efficiencies, I guess I'm, I'm seeing this real difference of approaching this as it relates to, you know, somehow the community advisor councils are ones that are interrupting the efficient and effective flow of projects, and again, there may be cases where you could point that out, but I, you know, even my questions to folks, I've only heard a couple of examples, versus things that we've done over the last four or five years that have introduced, for good reason, into the process, other levels of review and consideration that now are being used as, as counted against the five, versus, you know, the backdrop that could say that community council, at least, can get a continuance on, on an item, because you're, you don't allow for that, at least in this example.
In, in this example, correct. I think we, as we mentioned in the report, we're still in the process of, of really unpacking that legislation and understanding exactly how it plays out here. That piece of this is just one part of this larger package of, of proposals and amendments to the CPAC process, partly in an effort to try to comply with this legislation, but then also to move projects forward more quickly.
So, just one follow-on question to that, then. So, in, in light of, I guess, what's still being, you know, looked at and considered as to how we would comport with the state law, and, you know, the consideration, wouldn't it be better that, once we have a better handle on that, and I know you used the example of ADUs as well, but to know what that looks like and how you maybe are going to approach it, before we cut, at least in the recommendation, cut the community advisor councils out only to the degree that they get one shot at it? They don't even get a continuance, for even a good reason, unless the applicant asks for it. And it just seems to me that we're here with this, saying that, you know, here's the issue, at least in part, but we don't have the answers on that, nor do we have the full picture, I guess, and that's my question, because, you know, are you think you're going to know after the first of the year, are you going to know mid-part of next year? But see, if we're going to look at community councils, we got to look at our entirety of our process if we're looking to make sure we meet the five obligation, but also for the efficiencies that are being sought here in the process, is...
I, I think it could be part of the consideration. I think it really impacts the ability of the continuances. I mean, there's a, a balance of other proposals as part of this package, but the continuance piece, I would be hopeful that we would know more before this item comes back to you for consideration.
So, you're saying, just now, kind of, probably come back the second week of January, that you think you're going to know more by, in a, in a month from now, is that what you're...
Potentially.
Okay, all right, thanks.
And I think Supervisor Nataulie, again, our intent today is to present this item, and if the Board so desires that you want to have a continuation, and we can factor that in, and as this law, we unravel it more, we can find out more about it, but you do have that option to provide for one more continuation. This proposal does not say that you cannot continue the item. That's just our recommendation. Planning Commission had a different recommendation, so.
Thank you. Continue.
Okay. The report package includes an ordinance amending county code to clarify the purpose and intent of the CPAC reviews, as I described earlier. It also sets a uniform number of CPAC members at seven, with the exception of the Delta MAC, which would continue, which would be 11, which is their current number of Board members. It includes provisions to remove members due to absences and eliminates the secretary position, as the clerk of the Board's office is now providing clerking services at the meetings. I should also note that the ordinance eliminates obsolete code language related to the former community planning commissions. I do also want to clarify the provisions on removal of office due to absences. The proposed code language states that the members would be removed with four excused or unexcused absences annually. For purposes of this section, staff's intention is that annual means on a calendar year basis.
Supervisor Frost.
I had a question regarding the wording in the section around term and attendance. There was a sentence in there that said, "Members would be removed from office after three consecutive unexcused absences, or after four absences upon approval of their appoint, appointment to the Board, appointing Board member." I guess, are you saying that members would be excused after three consecutive unexcused absences, or four absences annually, or for the entire term of their service?
It's annual.
So, that did not, that might be a typo, it didn't say annual, or I don't think it was clear.
I see. We can clarify, in the county code langu, in the county code, or the ordinance amending county code, there's a section on removal of members, where perhaps it is a bit more clear, so we can revise the staff.
But it's basically saying if they missed one in January and March, and September and November, that's four in one year they're excused?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
The ordinance related to the zoning code is limited to removing the provision of bumping the hearing authority from the zoning administrator. As I discussed that in, in some detail earlier, I think I'll, I'll skip through that, that piece of the, that piece of my remarks, but that's the extent of the zoning code amendments is related to that provision. Although I should also note that, that once the Board takes final action on the package, there are a number of, of changes that will need to be made to the Development Code's user guide, and staff will update the user guide administratively at time of approval. The uniform bylaws will replace the 14 different bylaws and operating procedures that are currently in place to administer and govern the various CPACs. The bylaws address topics, including membership, attendance requirements, officer responsibilities, and operations of the meetings. To wrap up my presentation, this item is a, a review and comment, as the executive just mentioned. Following direction from today's meeting, staff will incorporate the changes that are identified into the final package and return, potentially in January, with the package for approval. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Supervisor Nataulie.
Yeah, one, one other question, I know we've got folks to testify this, but I wanted to ask about the, there's another thing that's not so subtle in my mind, that's embedded in all of this, and that relates to the ability for other items being referred to community councils to take a look at. Right now, if I'm not mistaken, any individual member of this Board can work with whatever respective department, assuming it fits in the role of what the advisory council will look at on behalf of a community, to either agendize, or have a workshop, a community forum, all those things are referenced in the bylaws in different ways or the other. And now, if I read this correctly, it's going to require at least a majority, if not the entire Board, that was the word that was used in the staff backdrop, and I'll just say, I, I, I think that that's really moving in a direction that, you know, we as the elected representatives of the five districts in this county, certainly there are items that this Board may, as a whole, direct, but the ability to work with, and I'll speak to the five councils that, that, you know, either I wholly and/or in, in good part oversee in the, in the district that I represent, and to say that items are scheduled by the clerk of the Board with concurrence from the entire Board. One, I think it's a burden on any one, five of us to have to bring in a board item if I want to go talk about a road project, or talk about, in, in some cases, maybe some general approaches this county is looking at, it might even be budget-related for all I know. There was references to some of that when we did the Planning Commission setup, but there's also talked, talked about it, at least in general terms, in some of the other establishing resolutions, or the implications of, of budget cuts, whatever that might be, assuming that we were working with the, the chairperson and the, and the council. And so, I, I don't know, again, I'm going to ask this in a formal question, Chris, where, is that comments you took from this Board last February? Because, you know, if, if that was clearly stated, I don't recall that being clearly stated, that, you know, there was going to be the structure that it had to go one through the clerk of the Board, and secondly, it had to be the entire Board. You know, we agree on a lot of things, but it's not always 5-0 up here, and, and I guess, I, I don't know, why have we now migrated this all the way back to say that the advisory councils that work at the pleasure of this Board of Supervisors in advisory capacity, that you have to have the concurrence of at least two colleagues, if not the entire day, and I don't know what that meant, in order to have items heard before those councils? That, that, to me, is, is a real reversal and a retreat from, I think, where we've evolved, but I think to good government and to using communities as a sounding board for important items that are important to them, and maybe to the broader community. This is even outside the planning realm, and so, where is it that that was, what's the genesis of that? I guess that's my question.
Well, I, I think generally, I mean, we did include an attachment that had the number of items that have come to CPACs that are sort of outside of, of planning's purview. I think generally speaking, just from an administration standpoint, just seeking clarity about what items are to be placed and what aren't, given that there's consistently a confusion and, and sometimes a, I guess I would leave it at that, sometimes a bit of confusion about items that are being asked to be scheduled for, for CPAC meetings, coming from nonprofits, coming from other departments, and trying to create some process by which items will be able to be scheduled for CPACs, and then make sure that they are appropriately resourced at those meetings, given that we have clerks, staff, and potentially planning staff at those meetings, and sometimes that might not be necessary for them to be there.
Okay, I, I appreciate the, the explanation you offered, I guess, I'm, I'm going to just for a moment here, offer, I guess, a, a concrete example, and I think I'm going to frame it by the fact that, at least with, with a couple of the councils in District Five, they reflect either large neighborhoods and/or distinct communities in a very large council area. In fact, if you look at your attachment to Exhibit A, you can see, obviously, if it wasn't, you know, visual enough, you know, large land masses, some of them are rural, some suburban, some exist in older suburban, some in growth areas. But to your point about nonprofits, I know that a few months ago, my office was approached by a service provider who was in one of my colleague's districts, that was going to look to move to an area into existing business complex. It wasn't an up or down, it was for more of an information item, and they went out there at the suggestion, it got scheduled, and it was, you know, it wasn't an up or down vote, it was to provide additional information to the community, and I think maybe break down some stigma regarding mental health programs. That is the community sounding board, that, you know, in, in a lot of these areas in, in, in the county, you don't have, you know, you know, park boards, or, you know, you may have fire districts that are consolidated, and so they meet along this, the community advisory councils are those sounding boards, and in that example, again, you know, it was my suggestion, that program, you know, had an open house two weeks ago, it's been well-overseen by the community, it's going to provide great service to folks with mental health challenges, and something I was very surprised... great service to folks with mental health challenges, and something I was very supportive of, but I wanted to be sure people knew about it to try to break down that stigma. And yet now it's being used as an example where that would have required the entire board to direct that. That's ridiculous. Thanks.
Supervisor Frost.
I just, I wanted to mention, I did receive some public comment from a Mr. Jay Schneider, and one of his comments went to a little bit of what Supervisor Nottoli was talking about, and the concern around how the CPACs would only hear items that were proposed by county staff and relating to, you know, planning. And I wanted to just mention, because in my district, this is something that's really important to my constituents also, that sounding board that Supervisor Nottoli was talking about, I think, you know, the problem that we have right now is that, and it's in the news, that, you know, the National Apartment Association is saying that we have the slowest starts and the largest barriers, and we're the worst in the nation for housing starts, and the whole idea around trying to create some efficiencies is to speed things up and get us to some faster project approvals. And so, what I wanted to say in relation to this is that the CPAC, Community Planning Advisory Council, by virtue of its name, it is for community planning advisory. It's not a city council or a community council, and, but I do think that in the unincorporated areas, and I have the second largest unincorporated district, that type of function is really important. In Orangeville, we have, the community has actually created their own community council from an organic level, it's not something that's sponsored by the county, it's something they have done. In Rio Linda, they did the same thing with visions and bridges, and so, in different parts of the unincorporated county, there are leaders that emerge to have conversations that are varied in nature but not specific to planning. But CPAC, in my opinion, is all around planning. It's, that's what that board is appointed to do. And so, I think it's good to create a clear understanding of what they're there to do, and I think it's really important that we keep that focus in order to create the efficiencies that we seek. And I also want to say, I don't think it's the CPACs that create the problem. I think the problem is, you know, I don't think it's anyone's fault, but I do think that we can look for efficiencies at all levels, you know, within the county, within the CPACs, I think we should, and we are, and we are doing that. And so, this is just part of what we're doing, it's just a small part. It's not saying we have a problem with the CPACs, it's saying let's create, let's figure out how we can do better to get to quality approvals.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Question for CEO. I think you're hearing some concerns and strong opinions up here about the nature of our housing crisis, the import of doing what we have under our control to help spur the production of much-needed housing in the county, and as I mentioned earlier, that against the, or, you know, the balance with having a transparent and very rich community-involved process in terms of project review. Was, excuse me, was there any thought given to this particular set of recommendations that might be included in a broader effort that admittedly would take more time, that kind of holistically looks at what the county can do differently to decrease the cost of housing in particular, make the process more streamlined from beginning to end, including CPAC review and their, you know, their critical role in understanding how projects are going to affect local communities? Because if the answer is no, and it's been a while since we really have taken that on, and given your last comment, Mr. Gill, about the fact that we have at our leisure today an ability to continue this, we don't have to necessarily act definitively this afternoon, do you think it's worthwhile to perhaps give it that thought and possibly look at kind of a whole suite of things that this board might do to affect the efficient and lower-cost production of housing in Sacramento County?
So we are undertaking that question on the production of housing, so we have folks from SHRA planning our office, looking at it holistically, when we have housing projects that come up, how quickly can we move them through? So that is underway. My comment earlier about continuing was more about if you want to give us feedback to continue a certain item, this is not a concrete, this is to get feedback from you. So those are two different things that go through my mind when you were asking me the question, but we are working through, and LeAnn is part of the group, and so is Chris, on how we can get more affordable housing out there.
And SHRA is the lead on that?
We all are working together with them.
Okay. And when is, so when is that, when is there going to be a report back or a list of recommendations for actions that this board might consider? When is that going to be in front of us?
So, you remember back in October when SB two money was coming up, the board had asked us to come back in spring timeframe to give you an update where we are, how the different affordable housing components, what's the money available, so we're working towards that target date.
Is it just focused on quote-unquote affordable housing or all housing?
We're looking at affordable housing, because what we're looking at is more the crisis on that component, and that's what we're targeting at this point.
I guess what I'm suggesting is something a little different. I'm considering all housing, because you, I mean, you may have certain segments of the housing market which could be considered more affordable that are right on the cusp of being more affordable if it were not for lengthy processes and permitting protocols and that kind of thing, so I'm looking at this even more holistically. Is that something that, if it's the will of this board, that we could undertake?
Yeah, if that's what the board wants to do, we will shift our focus from what we're working on.
Well, I would say add to it.
Add to.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I'll make a comment on, and I agree with Supervisor Serna, and it kind of goes in line with the comments I made earlier today, and that's the, so when this came up, you know, and I wasn't, I don't think I'm the only board member to have gone to the CEO to look at the CPAC process, but by no means do I think that that is, you know, exhausting the issue, and I think that we should, you know, unturn every stone we can to find a way to make it easier to build housing in Sacramento, and that's where my interest in this subject came up. This is just one issue, and I'll give an example, a very concrete example, in the district that I represent, in which there is a project that is being proposed, which will include twenty-five single-family housing units for homeownership of low-income people, as well as sixty, fifty to sixty units for previously homeless people. And if that process is not done, if we don't get that entitled through the process by the end of June, then it will not qualify for state funding for this go-around, and they have to wait an entire another year to get that funding. So, I want to look at everything. I want to look at CPACs, I want to look at all of our planning procedures, because all it takes is one hiccup, all it takes is one continuance from CPAC or someone else to derail that project for an entire year. And again, as I said this morning, you know, we're not in normal times, we are in a crisis, and if we don't look at CPACs and other policies and procedures within our planning department, and we continue to lose opportunities, we continue to lose new housing units, be they low-income or otherwise, then I think it's a great mistake. So, that's where my thinking has been on this process all along. Supervisor Nottoli.
Yeah. And certainly thank my colleagues for some of the examples, and I think that, to the point you were making, Chair Kennedy, that obviously, when there's, you know, a lot at stake, you know, the community processes are important, and, but also the timeliness, because there are windows at which, you know, either funding and/or other measures that would allow it to go forward could, you know, could lose time as well as places in line for support of those particular projects. And I think, you know, the housing shortfall is obviously very real, no denying that. I guess, if I could, just for a moment, because again, it kind of goes to my comments, and certainly these are not, never met it, you, Chris, certainly professionally or personally, but when I think about, you know, the engagement, and, you know, I'd certainly hear some of the rural portions of the county, that, you know, we had surface mining permits, where basically, you know, those folks provide the aggregate and materials for, you know, the construction of new houses, for construction of new buildings, for roads and so forth, were at least contemplating exhausting some of that resource and looking to move to the foothills, basically to the area in the consumers' planning area. Those mining permits were before this board, they've both been approved, I supported them in the final analysis, but I think a good example was they're working with the community council in that particular area, where we'd never done, and had never had prescriptions relative to some of the community benefits that would accrue. And now that's a standard part of it, our planning department, I give credit for their work, and we have actually as a part of those permits, so, you know, when they are exercised, and we've done some subsequent in the areas that were previously mine, to have community benefits accrue, and this board reserved that policy decision, but there was good work done at that level. On the habitat conservation plan that this board approved, and I ultimately supported in recognizing that even some of my folks in those communities had serious reservations about them, but through that process, discussion of this board, and through the processes with other interested parties, including the development industry and environmental community, I think we came up with a really good approach to the implementation committee, and one that obviously received the, you know, unanimous support of this board. I use those as two examples, but I could cite others in the delta and down in the southeastern portion of the county, and certainly in the more suburban area in Vineyard, where over the years we've worked through, and again, you and I share much of that area, worked through a lot of issues relative to not just growth and development, but the traffic impacts, to water availability, to, you know, South Gate Parks being the provider, issues that were heard at the advisory council that were, again, it still reserved the rights to the policymakers of this county to get to, but we were able to vet those out and to get to solution sets that ultimately end up in, in most cases, at nearly unanimous, if not unanimous votes of this board. And as one who has a vast rural area, but certainly areas that are in our general plan, contemplated for development, and we have planning efforts that are ongoing, and one went to the commission last night, the touchbacks to the community council, and certainly to the affected parties, in my view, is critical, because it helps us get to yes. And, you know, it's not about being obstructive, it's not about being, you know, inefficient with time, and recognizing that maybe the crisis in housing is even greater than we might have ever contemplated, but I still think that the process that we've utilized, and one that I've been supportive of and relied on, ultimately recognizing that as one of five here, that my responsibility is to people of this county to use discretion when necessary, but certainly as a representative, to take into account as much information as possible and then render a decision. I think we all take that very seriously, and so, you know, again, I've said this many times, you know, whether I agree or disagree with decisions made by this board, I trust my colleagues, because again, you use your experience and, you know, your best efforts to arrive at a decision, whatever that may be. But in my view, from a planning standpoint and from a community standpoint, rural, suburban or otherwise, community councils serve a very valuable, almost invaluable, purpose. And I think that what we're tinkering with here today, or even looking at more wholesale changes, to me, is really a retreat from where we've been. And again, you know, we can talk about housing efficiencies, I appreciate Supervisor Serna, his comments about, you know, maybe a more holistic look, and you said the same, and so I'm supportive of those things as well, but to, I think, diminish the ability, and that may not be, that's my word, people may not see this, be diminished the ability for the communities to have a meaningful and certainly a structured role, but one that's advisory and important, certainly to this member of the board in my years of service, but I think to this board, to this county, I think really does disservice to the folks that are, many of whom are here from the areas I represent and elsewhere, who serve without compensation because they want to, because they care, and they're willing to act as a sounding board at the community level, and to act as a conduit for good information. And I think by limiting and structuring this in a way that kind of this one-size-fits-all, again, I think it diminishes the ability to really have that good input that helps us be better decision-makers here at this dius.
Thank you. Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. I know we still have yet to hear from the public, but generally speaking, I would say that, similar to the chair, that the CPAC is just, it's one spoke of the wheel of a planning process, and we need to get all of our policies and procedures, internal and external, cleaned up. It'll make it easier for everyone, both inside and outside the county, to get a project approved. And importantly, as time goes on, but particularly fairly fast, in the last few years, the legislature, state legislature, is taking away local government authority because we can't get to yes, because we take so long. So, it isn't just CPACs, it's really our internal procedures, and we need to diligently look at those policies and procedures and get them done quickly. Otherwise, it'll all be, legislatures, they're already changing zoning en masse, and then they've given us this five-meeting rule, we need to get in gear, and this is one piece of it. And for the most part, I like most of the changes.
All right. Thank you. That seems to be the last comment at this point from the board, so I will go to public comment. Thank you, Chris. Chris Norm.
Chris Norm with the North State Building Industry Association, represent 500 member companies in the building, construction, development industry in this region, and the vast majority of the builders here in this area. I'd like to begin by thanking staff for their diligent work on this proposal that they've spent the last year talking to the CPACs, talking to the community, talking to our industry, and getting some valuable feedback. I'd also like to begin by saying that our industry respects and supports the notion of community input at the beginning of the process, that's very, very important. So, we want to say that we honor the CPAC's work, and don't want to get rid of that input, we just want to look for ways that we can create certainty in this process. But as you all know and have alluded to, we face a housing crisis, and right now, we're building about sixty percent of the housing that we have traditionally built in this region. So it's within this context that we applaud your work and your endeavor to look at all the different spokes in the wheel, or different elements of this process. As I said, we are interested in creating certainty in this process, getting valuable feedback at the outset, so that we can have a process that moves forward and brings the housing product that is needed. Our analysis of the CPAC process is that around forty percent of the meetings that are scheduled are canceled for any number of reasons, and that the average amount of time that projects are being asked to come back repeatedly is seven months, that's the average for the county. And this affects all types of projects, infill, affordable housing, other types of projects. Half the projects that the CPACs are looking at are less than three acres, so it affects everything that is coming to the market. And as there's a discussion about that we need to be looking at everything, that our industry has been working hand-in-hand with the county for the last couple of years, actively looking for ways that we can improve things, whether it's financing plans, additional staff, technology, we're working on all those fronts actively. This doesn't come to this board all the time, but we're actually actively working with the administrative staff, with Mr. Hartwig's staff, on a monthly basis, on a weekly basis. And we're certainly open to continuing to look at other options, working with the county on that. I see my time is up, so I'll just say that we respectfully submit that we ask for your support for this measure, and thank you again for looking at it.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay. I do have a number of cards from members of the Delta Protection Commission, and Supervisor Nottoli has asked that I allow, how much would you ask?
Well, they have five members here, the chair would like to ten minutes to present, up to ten minutes.
Okay. So ten minutes, and I will introduce the chair, and you can use your ten minutes how you see fit. So with that, it's Gil LeBrie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gilbert LeBrie, I'm chairman of the advisory council, have been for forty-two of the forty-three years it's been in existence. I am one of three original members of that council. It's kind of interesting, after this discussion, you know, we're the Delta citizens municipal- It's kind of interesting, after this discussion, you know, we're the Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council. So we were not set up necessarily as a planning advisory council. Maybe there was a good reason for that, inasmuch as the Delta's made up of numerous communities, none of which, except for Ileton, which is, has its own, is a municipality, but the rest of them do not have planning departments, or city councils, or anything. So we have been, over those 42 years, the go-to center spokesperson for that, for all of those Delta communities, and the Delta itself is kind of a community, made up of communities. So it's kind of an interesting thing when you look at how, when we were established, why we were established. In terms of this proposal, and we have spent considerable amount of time reviewing and discussing the changes. And you do have copies of our minutes from the June workshop, the minutes from the latest, when the final report came out. You've also got copies of letters that I've written regarding some special issues that have come up, so that we are there to be the spokesperson for that. But we're really concerned of the drastic changes we see considered this to the planning advisory process, as we believe has worked well, at least it has in the Delta. And I think it has in a lot of other councils. Clearly, there are issues. And we've had good, we've never had a problem with a quorum as long as I've been in chair. And we've only continued items a couple times. Over all of those years, we do not have development. We're the area that allows development elsewhere. We're not supposed to have development. So there are some differences between the councils in terms of issues, applicant unhappiness, participation, record-keeping, and meeting protocol. But that is not all of the councils. I am puzzled why the solution necessitated such a complete overhaul, and in my opinion, diminution of the community advisory role in general, rather than just dealing with the councils of concern and amending those bylaws, and dealing with it from that standpoint. The effect of the proposed changes, to me, it is obvious to me, and to the other members of the DECMAC, I've got five members here, we've, in all of our hearings on this item, we've had more than a quorum, so they are concerned. We've had turnover without having to have term limits. The original purpose, to encourage citizen participation in the planning process, and to provide community forums to propose and review community goals and objectives. I believe they'll be frustrated with the proposal that is before you, that the role and importance of the councils will be drastically reduced. We've had one workshop with all the specifics, but no, without all the specifics, and real changes being sought, followed by one formal review of the PER report, four days before it was heard by the planning, the county, the planning commission. And did not, we not believe, I do not believe, that the outcome respected all the time and effort that we spent, or that we spend, have spent over the years for free. So consequently, DECMAC does not believe-
Gil, let me just say, you've used up five minutes. If you want other members of your board, then you might want to get to them to speak.
I'll take their minutes if they'll give them to me.
That's absolutely fine. If it's okay with them, it's okay with me.
It's in, you can see it in the information you've, that we've provided, that the council,
the Delta Citizen Municipal Advisory Council, does not believe one size fits all, in terms of advisory duties, in terms of membership, in terms of organization, regarding the secretarial position, because we are the only ones that felt like we got extra, a lot extra out of having our own secretary. Agenda setting, again, we just, there's examples of items that have come before you, and I could make a long list of a lot of them over the years that have come in, that did not come through planning necessarily, that came from the community. So clearly, the rural councils, I think, in District Five should be treated differently than the smaller, more urbanized districts. I mean, clearly, there are issues, where there's a lot happening. The next steps, I don't know, I'm not sure what is currently proposed can be fixed to satisfy a majority of the councils. If you look at the, all the comments from the different councils, they're not really reflected in the report that's in front of you, in any changes. So it doesn't seem like, the PER was swayed by that input received in meetings with all 14 councils. Further, it would have been prudent, probably, and respectful to visit the councils again, and really explain why their concerns are not addressed. Without any significant changes to the proposed amendments before the board, the Delta council members believe the role of the advisory council in the planning process becomes superfluous.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Thanks, Gil.
Appreciate it. John Merchant.
I'm a member of the Casumis CPAC, another very semi-urban and very rural CPAC that differs in a lot of different ways from some of the things we're talking about today. I came originally to talk about the form, and now there's more to talk about, and I think there's so much that we've heard already today, we will probably, as a group, come back to you with another letter. But the few things I want to address is when we talk about, especially from the standpoint of these folks back here and us, in the kind of district that we're in, we talk about two kinds of issues, and I'll just use them as analogies, we approve garages, and we approve quality of life issues. I mean, I could stand here and use up all my time telling you item after item, and Supervisor Natoli listed some of the things out of the planning realm that have come through, that we've discussed continually over the years concerning the landfill, the connector, I'd go on and on and on, and the dangers on the Scott Road. All of these things have been aired out in an environment that brings people together, and a lot of people attend our meetings, and they are crucial to public input. I don't understand where the front-end logjam in this process is, and I don't think, from our standpoint, these gentlemen that just spoke before me, I don't think it's with us. We don't do continuances, and we don't do cancellations of meetings, and we never have. We have some of these people that have sat on this board for 10, 12, and 14 years, I've been on it for six. This doesn't happen, and I don't see where we are contributing to the downfall of the housing crisis in the county of Sacramento by what we do. It just doesn't make any sense to me. The same thing with the zoning versus planning bumping and not bumping up. I mean, you're asking us to review a project, and one thing I absolutely need clear in this is, from what I read, and maybe now it's all changing again, we're supposed to get two passes at a major development process. I thought in the last go-around of reading that I had, I mean, you're asking us to go against 800, 900, 1,000 units of new housing in a specific area, and take one shot at it, without a technical study, without any data. We're supposed to get it back, as I understood, when we get the draft DIR. If that's not going to happen, then we really, really have a problem here. I just don't, I don't appreciate the fact that the building people who, in the planning documents originally evidently got so many meetings, you know, and there were so many consultations with them about what was wrong with the CPAC process, we got one meeting in one night. I think Mr. Pahuli left with a fairly good of understanding of how we felt on the issue, but I just don't think we're there.
Can you wrap?
Yes, I can. I'm sorry, I'm representing five people who work for a living. When we do this at 7:00, we have a quorum here. But we'll follow up with a letter, and thanks very much.
Thank you. Barbara Shinney.
Good afternoon, thank you for having me speak. My name is Barbara Schill, and I work for California YIMBY. Can you hear me?
Yes, I apologize for missing your name.
Oh, it's okay. It's a terrible last name. I work for California YIMBY. YIMBY stands for Yes in My Backyard. We are a statewide organization that advocates for more housing in the state of California. I represent Northern California, from as far down as Modesto all the way up to the Oregon border. I personally live and work in Sacramento. I was born and raised here, and I've only been away from Sacramento for short portions of my life. I also am here representing House Sacramento. House Sacramento is the local YIMBY group, and you've probably seen us here at meetings before advocating for typically more housing, infill housing, things of that nature. As every member of the board has recognized, we are in the midst of a housing crisis, and the need for more housing was yesterday. So we are in support of the staff's recommendation to reform the current process, CPAC process. We appreciate the hard work that the CPACs have done in the past, and we aren't placing the blame solely on them, but we definitely have a housing supply problem. And anything that hinders the production of new housing, having several meetings and things of that nature to get new projects approved, is, makes things difficult for those of us that are currently experiencing the housing crisis in our everyday lives, spending too much time in our cars, people sleeping in their cars, people sleeping on the streets, people sleeping on people's couches, things of that nature. So again, we want to thank the staff for all their hard work in, with this report, and we do support the reform. And I also want to say that what Supervisor Frost said about finding other, and I think Supervisor Kennedy, finding other areas that also hinder new projects is also something that we would love to support, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Jafiel Borja.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board, thank you so much. I feel like I just saw some of you last night, so hopefully you guys had a good sleep. Thank you again for the staff for putting this item forward. I've been with your hard-working staff at 7:00 PM at the steps of middle school locally at District Five, because we ran out of, we didn't have a room. So, you know, when we were talking about CPACs, we really put community in the very first word of that acronym. While the spirit of streamlining and efficiency are critical as financial stewards of public money, I just hope that the board would consider not deconstructing this process to just make it into a bureaucratic shroud. You know, we want CPAC to be a community-centered approach and enable a transparent and accountable platform for the public and advocates to weigh in on. You know, just a few years ago, SB 1000 became law, creating an emphasis on environmental justice, and encompassing a balanced review and incorporating communities' concerns in general plans. I fear that if we make the CPAC process weaker, there are highly-trained staff at the state and federal level, I should know, I was one of them, who would be so critical about how we are actually achieving measurable community input, especially for disadvantaged communities. And when you're talking about finite amounts of SB1 dollars now sitting at the hands of either the MPOs, state agencies, or maybe some at the federal level, or federal grants at the federal level, you're looking at competition statewide, and I feel that there might be a regressive approach if we don't move the needle forward in the right way, especially when we're looking at competitive dollars, harder work that will be coming in in the next pipeline this year. We're also facing the governor's executive order, we're looking at a lot of climate change proposals, and I just want to reiterate that from my experience, you know what kills housing and transportation projects? It's CEQA, NEPA, permitting, litigation, supplementals, project scope changes, limited resources, coupled funding from different agencies, labor and workforce shortage, or sometimes lawsuits from labor themselves, time extensions, infill versus single occupancy design and mixed use. None of that comes from a community input of these folks who are coming in from unincorporated areas like where I live in. So I definitely do, I thank you for your time, happy to answer any questions, but I appreciate the staff's work and your consideration on this item. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Brian Holloway. Supervisor Frost, would you have, okay.
Good afternoon, Chair Kennedy, members of the board, Brian Holloway, Holloway Land Company, representing myself today. I have, over the last 40 years, had the pleasure of being before every CPAC in the county multiple times, and I have found those meetings generally very informational, very important, not only for me and the project, but for my clients as well. So I think the CPAC process is a very, very important thing to have. A couple of things, I've read the staff report, it's a very excellent report, and the recommendations, I would urge you to adopt those. The issue that you've discussed about continuances has been a problem, because in the past, some of the CPACs have, first of all, they only meet once a month, and so that's one of the big difficulties that we face. Some of the CPACs have taken a position that if there's only one item on the agenda, they'll automatically continue it to the next month. Some of the CPACs will, if one neighbor requests a continuance, they'll continue the project another month. And obviously, if you have a quorum issue, the project gets continued another month. Now, I've never had that trifecta of three continuances put together, but in multiple cases, I've had two of those happen consecutively, and the result is a two to a three-month delay to probably a six-month development project. So that's been one of the issues. I think the staff recommendations take care of that issue, I just wanted to bring that up. The other thing I want to mention is that on the issue of the CPAC's free appeal, if the issue before them is truly of community-wide interest, the decision by the CPAC to appeal should be a unanimous vote, not a just simple one-member vote. If it's that important, and it's that critical, it needs to be a unanimous vote of the CPAC. Let's keep the CPACs going, I think they're a good resource. One thing I would like to say is, Richard Rosamovich, who is a civil engineer, very active in the community, filled out a speaker slip, has a report, and he asked me if I would just submit it to the record. Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Fred Hegy.
I'm Fred Hegy, I'm the chairman of the Casumis CPAC. I don't remember seeing this fellow at any of our meetings in the last 15 years, but I'm sure he was there. And we've never extended any meetings past time. I'm hit and miss here. The five-meeting rule, how many times has projects come out, and they're introductory, non-voting projects? Tiger did it, they were here at the county, granted, all the mines, Cordova Hills. I went to UMTI meetings down here, months before it ever came to the CPAC. So we shouldn't be blamed for that. That's on them. In most cases, they're waiting on the EIR report. So that's all them, not us. If they come with everything intact, they get a vote. If the project is really big, we'll do it one meeting, and that's it, two hours. Is there a waiting list from any of the supervisors for people wanting to get onto CPAC? So then having four absences and you're off is pretty silly. Most of our people, they try real hard to make it, but they're trying to get young people on it, they got young families, they got jobs, it can't be just a bunch of us old guys. So anyway, something has to be set up, and the big thinkers can figure that one out. One thing that contributes to housing- One thing that contributes to housing problems is when the developers were able to buy their way out of the low-income housing. If they weren't allowed to do that, we would have a lot of houses better priced. Sixteen seconds. Anyway, our area is rural mainly, we have septic's and well water. So there's not going to be any big projects out there unless you've got zillions of dollars to put in sewers. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Fred. Richard Rosamowitz.
I think Brian submitted his report, I don't know if he had to leave.
What's that?
I think Brian, representing his comments, that was the report.
Okay, I just got the card. All right, that's the final card I have. Is there anyone else in the public that did not turn in a card? Thank you very much. Supervisor Frost.
In general, I am very excited and appreciate the work that the staff have done, and that all the folks in the communities have done to try to find some efficiencies. I know in my district, we have had those conversations with our CPACs who seem okay with the changes. It is clear that there are some differences with the Casunus Community Services District and the Delta Community Advisory Council, and I don't know if this is a good solution, but I just want to throw it out as, I wonder, on some of the boards that I serve on, we have an umbrella, we have a board, but then there's a smaller board that serves in conjunction with that board. And so I wonder if it's possible for those two special districts that were created a long time ago, and their names do reflect something different, for them to have a CPAC that operates within their organization, or whatever you want to call it, and the CPAC is, works by the overall bylaws that are consistent throughout the county, so that we have consistence with the CPACs, but they retain that actual additional functions that they have been doing over time that are important to their community. I just wanted to throw that out. I want to say that I really feel that, I feel committed that it's important to keep our focus with the CPACs and create some protocols and some efficiencies that are, that are the same throughout the county, so that we can find, meet those goals that we're trying to find with doing a better job on timing. I like the idea of the CPACs having an early review, coming in really, really early in the process, so the community is involved, and I get that there are some who don't want just one, and there was some thought regarding, you know, why can't we, we can have one, I think it's good to have one extension, maybe have the CPACs have that early review so that they can give us their overall advisory on a project, and then after the EIR comes in, have that last review. And that's their opportunity to just make comments based on the EIR and understand where the project has gone. I think the idea of trying to not have so many, push it forward, is what we're trying to accomplish, and we do, we definitely need that early input. I think it's okay then with the, you know, one continuance, is what I'm trying to say. I also wanted to mention the form that the staff, the sample draft form that the staff had created. I wonder if it's possible, where is that form? In that form, the voting is like number six, I'm trying to find that form. And I think it's, it makes it more clear, it almost looks like the voting and the advice disappeared in this form, and I think it would be more clear if we moved that up to item number three instead of number six. So you, you have this many council members present, is there a quorum, the number of community members present, what they, the vote, and the results of the vote, and then the community comments, and the comments and suggestions on why they came to that vote. I think, I'm just saying, I think the form kind of loses sight of the fact that there's a decision that was rendered there, and it would be nice if that was more prominent in that form. And I also am okay with saying, may have a secretary, but not required, since we have the clerk of the board that's going to be there taking notes and taking on those responsibilities. For those organizations that want to have a secretary, let them have a secretary if they want, I don't see any problem with that. And regarding the number of members, I think, all, I don't think any of my CPACs care, they're happy with the members, I think it's five. There's only a couple CPACs that have more, so we could say, five members, and have an exception for the two CPACs that have more members, let them have the same, same number of members that they have now, that's, it's what they've done, and why disrupt that? I don't know what, why we have to do that.
We're actually proposing seven, just to be clear.
Oh, seven, okay, seven members with an exception for the Delta, and I think Delta's the only one that has fifteen, let them have fifteen.
I think they currently have eleven.
Eleven.
Oh, eleven, okay, whatever it is, okay. And so, those are my, I don't think we're, we're not voting on this, but those are my thoughts on where we could come to center, and then just in closing, I think it's really important for us to keep CPAC as planning and keep that focus that you have going here on having a very strict protocol regarding timing and what's expected, and proper training that's required. I think all that is going to help, help us accomplish just this part of it. I know there's a whole bunch more at the county level, but hopefully, maybe those are some thoughts, those are my thoughts.
Okay, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank those that took time out of their, middle of their day to be here and provide testimony on the subject. I know some of you came from far stretches of the county to be here, and certainly appreciate the contribution of what you had to share with us. One of the things I learned in the course of that testimony is that not every CPAC is the same, and I think that's a really important nuance for us to take under consideration today, and on the fourteenth, if that's when we take final action. I think you all heard to a person up here that our focus, I think rightfully so, is really showing concern for what, again, what we can do to address the, the lack of new housing, almost entirely across all income sectors, but especially affordable housing. And so, I'd like to suggest that instead of us continuing the item for adoption on the, on the fourteenth, and as I alluded to earlier, I would very much like to see a consideration of what we're being asked to review today, to look at it in the context, and it's going to take some more time, but look at it in the context of that allegiance to the broader objective, especially towards how best to expedite the approval and review of housing projects. And I think that can be done, and I think there's also a way that we can be a little more surgical about what it is that we think we have concerns about relative to those CPACs that have a different history than some of the CPACs that were referenced here and that were represented here today, that I think made it a very sound point about they not being the ones that are necessarily contributing to added length of time for entitlements when it comes to residential applications. And I think some of the examples that were cited, both by the Delta folks and the Casunas folks, made it very clear that their, you know, the subject matter that they're being asked to review is probably very different than the Natomas CPAC, for instance. And so I think it would be much more productive and produce the kind of results that we want in the broader context, again, of expediting the review and approval process overall, if we were to consider this, any adjustment to CPAC protocols and process, together with a broader consideration of what it is we think we can do that's under our control, that's with, obviously within state law, to affect the more expeditious production of housing. And I think, coming back, if that's the will of this board, and making that consideration, we could look at the qualitative differences in the CPACs in terms of the history of what they're being asked to consider, and a look forward in terms of what we expect that they'll be examining, in terms of adding their, their review value for the board, for the Planning Commission, and make some distinctions, make some distinctions, and still be consistent in terms of understanding that, you know, the Delta Council is not going to be looking at tracts of thousands and thousands of units, whereas perhaps the CPAC is, the CPAC and the Natomas is. And that's a very important distinction. So I'd like to make a motion that, and I know there's others queued up here to speak, but I'd like to put out there a motion that we, not table this, but that we give direction, clear direction to staff to bring this back, and bring it back, I would say, in a timeframe of the spring, maybe the March-April timeline, and I would defer to, to staff in terms of what they think the workload is, and whether that's a reasonable amount of time for the expectation that we can get something back that's more comprehensive, that addresses that broader concern that they've heard from the entire board this afternoon about the housing crisis. But I'd like to see this considered in that context, and I think, again, we could do that, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Okay. I would second your motion, I'll make some comments around it, certainly you're seeking some direction, so there's some thoughts, but I would, I think that approach rather than coming back here in January and taking a look that is more precise, maybe related to the bylaws, to the specifics of community interests, certainly recognizing the planning piece of it, and, but I would second your motion for purposes of, you know, at least getting that before, seeing a moment, but I do want to weigh in on some other comments.
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, thank you, and certainly thank my colleagues, obviously, for their comments. I think I'm going to find myself in a position, at least on some of the points, to be in some pretty strong disagreement on some of the items, I've spoken to them earlier, and want to maybe reiterate a few for purposes of, maybe the motion that's on the floor here, that would have a, a look that would get, I think, to the core of some of the things that we've heard from folks. I also, before I weigh in on specifics, just want to note that we did have commentary in writing, because folks were on, the chair of the Southeast CPAC, Mr. Reinhards, along with one of the members, submitted written comments, we had those from the Delta, I know we have people who hear from the Attorney Council, Mr. Jofiel spoke, but we have others that hear, and I've received comments previously from some of the representatives on CorePAC. And if I could just, just take a real quick moment to, again, reference a point that I made earlier, and I think it goes to the comments we heard from the CPAC representatives that were present, as well as in writing. And when I look at the five of those that certainly are in large part reflective of District Five, both in existing developed areas, as well as new growth areas, as well as very rural areas, the distinctions that I think are very critical, whether it be leaved areas in the Delta, whether it be the fact that they rely in large part in those areas on wells and septic systems, to other efforts that relate to, because we have agricultural and open space areas that really lend themselves, I think, to people oftentimes when they want to cite uses that may, you know, be somewhat ill-received by large population centers, that we've had proposals over the years that have said, well, why not go out, you know, the far southeastern part of the county, why not go out to, you know, to areas that are more rural in nature? And I think the community councils, you know, when I look at them, and even the Cordova CPAC, which I share with two colleagues here, Supervisor Peters and Supervisor Frost, but I look at, that has distinct communities and neighborhoods, you have Gold River, you have College Greens, you have Rosemont, you have Independence Amather. And I think about the Delta and its communities, and certainly the southeast area, we have Harold, and then you have areas that are more proximate to Galt, to the city of Galt, and then obviously the Vineyard Area, which has seen, you know, dramatic changes over the last three decades, that, I think, just to bundle this up to the point made by Supervisor Serna, I think it really doesn't provide the opportunity to talk about, I think, in the context of what people have termed the crisis here on housing, but then to get to, you know, what is it that's really broken that needs to be fixed? And as referenced in the councils in District Five, I would, you know, certainly, a challenge to folks to give me, and I have, asked, you know, what are the examples about these multiple continuances, these lack of quorums and so forth? And there may be some examples in rare situations, but I've certainly not found them, and again, if that was something that was of critical nature, then we could talk about that. I would pick up the phone and call the chairperson if necessary, and I share the Vineyard Council, obviously, with Supervisor Kennedy. So I guess, point of reference here as it relates to, not only, I think, the distinctions that are important, but the fact that we're dealing with adults who are vested in their communities, who are businesspeople, who are homeowners, and with, with rare exception, again, folks who come to this with, you know, a level of commitment and experience to really want to serve their community, that what we propose to do with these, and again, I want to go through them quickly, but where I have to take a strong difference, this modification to the appeal process, it makes me regret my vote on the zoning code amendments that we took up in 2015, that we pushed down issues that, again, could be of a community-wide interest, that will never have the opportunity under this proposed zoning code amendment to get to this board. And, you know, to me, it's not about being obstructionist, it's about being able to hear matters that do have that community-wide interest, they have to follow the rules that we prescribe, but to basically discount that, and now after the fact, because we did debate that, and I would, you know, I would go back and look at the tapes if necessary to have that discussion, and I know I met with staff about this as well. The continuance provision, to me, is important, not for delay, but if, in the event that there are items, to at least have one continuance. The, talking about the construct, I mean, it goes to the motions on the floor relative to the size of the councils, to how we account for absences and so forth. Again, attendance has not been a problem, to my knowledge, in all my years of service at the councils and the district. There may be limited items on the agenda, and if it wasn't critical, to continue an item for a month until they had more items to convene around. I made a point of it earlier, but this issue about planning versus other distinct items in the list that was submitted to the board, didn't show, you know, a massive number of items, and I don't think it was all-inclusive, but when, and John Merchant references in his comments, relative to, no other district in the county has a Kiefer landfill, obviously, but that has not been without issues over the years, there's been important issues that we've worked with the community around. You know, agricultural leases around the Kiefer bufferlands, that, again, references a specific geographic area of the county, but the Casunus CPAC has been a sounding board and a relevant source of information. Issues in the Delta relate to flood protection, to, you know, elevation of homes, to agricultural and residential interfaces, and that's not, you know, only in the Delta area, but in the southeast area. This board, and I know a couple of my colleagues will well recall, we had a debate about a proposed church in a agricultural residential area, and it was controversial, with this chamber's full of folks both supportive and opposed because they felt it wasn't the appropriate use. But that would have never gotten to the board under the context of some of the changes that, you know, I think are being contemplated here. And so I guess, that along with, I think, maintaining the secretary, I think it's important, not just for a placeholder, but I, again, I appreciate the work that, you know, Flo and the clerk of the board, and our services they're providing to the council, but I think that this kind of one-size-fits-all, standardize it, make it clear-cut, you get one shot at it in most cases, you lower the ability, and I think weaken, to use a word that was said earlier, you weaken the ability of the councils to actually that was said earlier, you weaken the ability of the councils to actually voice those community-wide concerns through a, through a process, obviously, that we're certainly ones that control it ultimately, as it relates to the design of it. I just think that, again, if I had to sum this up, that what I see here, and I said this last February, is something where we can find the efficiencies, and to Mr. Serna's motion, the one I seconded, I think that looking at other aspects, we've all said that, but really to, you know, look at the bylaws, and if we have problems with getting quorums and so forth, then there are ways to address that, and I would, you know, again, if it was in my district, then challenge me, you know? Again, as the one who nominates in large part to those councils, as we all do in our respective, we don't challenge the nominations of folks on those councils, they serve at the pleasure of this board. So why do we have to kind of remake this in a way that I think really diffuses and weakens, and I think, in particular, in a lot of ways, mutes the ability for folks to, one, call out specific issues to their electeds in a planning process, but also broader issues I think are important to quality of life, to community welfare, and to all of us, as whether we serve as representatives or are members of those communities. And so I guess I would just say that I think this needs to be reworked significantly, that it, in its current context, is a tremendous disservice to the people we call upon to, to service in this capacity, and that it really is a, a solution looking for a problem. Not that there aren't issues, I think it's been said by all of those who just about testified before us, but I, this package, I cannot support this package, and I would suggest that in that broader rework, we spend some more time with our community councils, they've taken time out of their day to be here, they were at the Planning Commission in large numbers, and that we have an opportunity later in the spring to come back and have some more discussion around ways to adjust the process, to provide for the efficiencies that are important, but not to mute the voice of the community councils and our communities at large. Thanks. Thank you. Supervisor Peters.
Hey, thank you. I had a question that needs to be answered by staff. Is there a definition to community-wide significance?
I think we leave it somewhat broad, and let me look for that specific wording.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, I've said most of what I wanted to say. I think, I generally like what's in here. I think we need to move forward quickly due to the housing crisis, we're just getting further behind the more time this takes. I'm fine with leaving the Delta and Casunus at the numbers they are. I think the quorum portion of this report takes care of that, because, well, you can read it. So, but I do like the idea of moving ahead with this. I think if we allow this to get bigger and do a complete examination of the housing crisis, that it just gets harder to handle, and I think, you know, your organization is sophisticated enough to bring the pieces together and approve them separately. So I think it's part of getting our policies and procedures in, in good shape. And it's interesting, the difference between the Delta and the other, the Delta and Casunus and the other CPACs, where you have shorter terms for people on their boards. To me, part of being on the CPAC is for the community to learn how projects are approved, to give the exposure to more people on how their government works. And I find that to be an important reason to keep the terms as described in this document. And I think, but I think it also gives the Delta communities plenty of room with extensions there. So those are my thoughts.
Supervisor Frost.
I agree that it's important for us to move forward with this, and I, I feel like everybody's kind of expressed some of their concerns, and you have information from us that you can go and try to make some adjustments that will be, that everyone will be hopefully happy with. And I would like to make a substitute motion that we move forward, rather than putting this off into a big, overall, housing crisis problem, that we move forward with this portion that we're working on here and come back in January, and hopefully you will have the ability to put something together that we'll all be able to agree upon. And so I make that motion, that we continue forward to bring this in January.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, a substitute motion and a second. So here's where I'm at. Were you done, Supervisor Frost?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Sorry. You know, I, in no way, my intention is not to limit public participation, my intention is to have more opportunities for more housing, and that's really where it's at for me. It was, as Supervisor Serna said, somewhat enlightening, hearing from a couple of CPACs that we don't hear from up here as much, as far as those of us that don't represent the district that you live in, because I think there are great variances in CPACs. I think that's probably the case, is from what I'm hearing here. My biggest, and here Supervisor Natale, you and I will disagree, is, is on the continuance thing. Again, is it the only problem? Absolutely not. Is it the biggest problem? Probably not. But it's potentially a problem, and I just want to eliminate those problems that can take a good projects, whether they be affordable housing or any other kind of housing, and can derail them. So I also, quite frankly, Supervisor Frost, don't think that a couple more months is going to make a big difference, as far as how to identify a way to protect those more unique situations, of which I was not terribly aware of prior to this hearing. But whatever goes forward, whether it's in the spring or if it's in January, you know, I'm going to be looking at the one thing, and that's how can we, you know, eliminate the opportunity for these projects to just get kicked down the road? And out of no malfeasance of any members of, any of the CPACs, it's just procedurally what happens. And it can, as I used that example earlier, I mean, you delay a project by a month, you delay a project by two months, you, sometimes you miss funding opportunities, you could lose that project entirely, or you can delay it for more than a year.
Miss the economy.
You delay a project for, right, you delay a project for a month or two, it can kick it into the next construction cycle. You know, so what seems like a small, short-term delay can kill a good project, and at the very least can lose an opportunity for more housing, and I am specifically interested in affordable housing. So with that, I do see merit in continuing this longer than January in order to see how we can protect those unique situations and unique characteristics of different CPACs, but still get to what ultimately, to me, is the goal here, and that's to remove unnecessary hurdles to good, positive development, particularly housing. So I won't be, though I, frankly, I am supportive of most of these changes, I do see where perhaps a little more time to identify areas in which we can protect those unique situations that are, that is not in here, so.
Could you, could we ask staff how long they think it would take to do this?
No, I'm not, now let me, no, Supervisor Serna, let me speak for you, but we're not talking about a massive overhaul of the planning department between now and spring.
No, what I would, what I'm suggesting is, is at least an identification of where we could find some, some efficiencies, and I would limit it to residential projects, you know, with a specific focus on affordable housing. I know we're doing that to some extent already when it comes to the work that SHRA is, is doing, and that our CEO alluded to earlier. But I think there's, I think, some pretty obvious agreement up here that that is something that is of value, in terms of at least identifying where we could set staff to go, do some work, and, and, you know, whether it's downstairs in the other building, in terms of the amount of time it takes to get permits, and how do you shorten that, the time it takes to get inspections, how do you shorten that, the time it takes to come back with, you know, before the board for various entitlements, and the Planning Commission for various entitlements. I'm not suggesting that there be a three-inch-thick board letter that's expected in March that's going to be the end-all, be-all to this, but, and quite frankly, my mind was changed by the testimony today. I came to the, to the afternoon open session certainly with an open mind about it, but I think hearing, again, the fact that not every CPAC is the same in terms of their experience, and I referenced the North Natomas CPAC, the Natomas CPAC, a couple of times. And that is a CPAC that has, you know, resulted in, with some frustrating outcomes in terms in their inability to have fine quorums, their need to continue because of that, and add delay. And this is a part of the county where arguably you have, you know, tens of thousands of potential units, I'm not prejudging that they'll ever be approved, but there are some applications, some very, very large land development applications in. And so if you take that compared to what we're hearing from Delta and Casunus in particular today, I think there's a way that we can come up with something that's a little more equitable in terms of being surgical about the expectation for how the, how the performance is going to be measured by different CPACs. But at the same time, I don't want to lose the fact that we've got one of those rare kind of golden opportunities, where you've heard all five of us kind of say the same thing in different ways today about this overall concern about, about housing. And so I think it would be, to more succinctly answer your question, Mr. Chair, coming back in, in March and April with just an identification of kind of categories of, you know, and I would, I would do it based on how our community development department is, is set up, in terms of building inspection, building permit processing, planning, and tell us, you know, where, where could we be looking to shorten timelines for different types of activities in those, those different aspects of approval for residential projects in Sacramento County?
Could we ask the question of staff as to, can they get that done by March?
Can we, I need time to huddle with them. Can we take the next item and come back to this? I don't want to give a date that we can't meet. I understand what you're asking, we just need to process it through, because it's a fairly, in our minds, I don't want to build a rocket ship, and you're just asking.
Yeah, and that's the thing, too, is that I, I, we don't need to eat the apple in one bite, you know? I mean, let's not wait until we have the perfect solution to have the greatest efficient planning department in the country, you know? We can incrementally make change.
But we do want that.
Yeah, I agree with that, but you see what I'm saying.
No, I do get it. If the board is comfortable, if you, I think we get the direction, if you give us some latitude on the time, realizing not to spend too much time, but let us figure out, there's a lot of feedback we got, what kind of things can we just very quickly tick, 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 and get there? We could be in front of you prior to March, but we will communicate to you when we think we'll have this back on the agenda.
Okay, so what we don't want to do is, you know, try to fix a system that's delaying by delaying.
Yeah. We don't want to have this conversation this time next year.
Right.
That, you kind of read my mind, because that's what's going through my mind, is I don't want to delay for delay, and I'm trying to figure out what's the easiest, and I'm encouraged that it doesn't need to be this thick, that's what we will produce.
Right.
And that's going to die on its own weight.
Right.
There are things that we think we can streamline, there's things that we need to look at, and what I'm also encouraged by hearing is, you're not expecting us if we're going to, it's not going to be just one time, we're going to fix it all. Some of these are processes that have been in place, we need to go through it. There's a CPAC process, there's a stuff on housing, there's different components that we get into.
We can, we can do the components separately.
Right.
And, and then put it all together, that's.
Correct.
If we need more time, I mean, that's fine, too. I'm good with that.
All right, so I think we get it, we'll listen to tape again, and we'll let you know what date we can come back.
I can withdraw my motion, and we are just giving direction, correct?
Yes. Okay, then we still have the original motion as a back on the floor, and Supervisor Natale.
Yeah, just quickly on the point, so as you do that analysis, then, I think in light of, obviously, you had a range of comments up here, but I think certainly some focus on, precise focus on the housing issue, I would hope that your analysis then was, in taking into consideration, obviously, you have comments that you've gotten from board members, is that then, how that may fit in the balance of recommendations that you have here, because, you know, whether one talked about continuances or about the bump-ups, and, because seven, a seven-month process for a project is not seven months at the CPAC, it's maybe seven months in the process to the, this broader look. And I guess I would ask that, you know, whether in the, in the end, you know, result, I agree with it or not, that we at least have that, because I think otherwise, if you go back and do that broader look under the motion here, and then you still come back with the same set of recommendations, and it isn't, you're looking at distinctions in community areas, but also then as to how you might see it, from a planning perspective anyway, that, you know, if we retained in the zoning code the ability to bump up, that's, that's a big deal, in my view. It's a very big deal. But, you know, how does that, against the backdrop of what delays might be involved and so forth, and to the point Chris spoke to quite a while ago, about special development permits and so forth, because I, I just think that's important. Otherwise, to me, we're going to continue, you're going to do a broader look, and I appreciate the comments here, but I would like to have that against the, at least the analysis to the backdrop of what you had before us here today, so.
I.
Could you do that?
I, I'm just thinking, give me a minute here. I, I think we can, but I think what I, we will ask the board at that point, whether you want it bumped up or not, that's something that we're going to need some input from board members, too, because bumping up has the timing, has all kind of different considerations. So that could be part of our process, that we come and interview you to find out what are the kind of things that you want to see bumped up, what you don't want to see bumped up. February, when we had the conversation, was a much broader, that try to resolve as much as you can at a lower level. Supervisor Natale, we've had a lot of conversations, that there are items that you want to come to the board. I don't want our work to get hung up on that piece, because we might come back and say, for us efficiently, we looked at this, with some look at the other processes, that's why the recommendation came, was to try to resolve at a lower level. But I think we need assistance, what I'm saying is, we need to come talk to you individually to find out what kind of things you want to see bumped, what you don't, and when we bring that back, we can have that conversation with that backdrop and everything else we have.
Okay, so just to me add one other point here, and I, and I've touched on it several times this afternoon, but housing certainly is a distinct portion of this, but there is retail, there's industrial, there's everything from service stations to dog kennels to use permits for certain types of daycare centers, whatever it might be, we delegated a lot of that. But, you know, that's not all housing, and there are, there's a whole lot of things that this, considered, and some of those over the years have bumped up to the board. And so my request on this analysis, you can have this distinction on housing, but I'm, you know, there's a whole body of use here that gets, it's all blended in, because once we do this, it covers everything, it's not just housing.
I think, point well taken, but I think if board is willing, we would like to come back and talk to you and get that feedback, because this is viewed as a whole package, and if there's particular ones that there's more interest, let us look at it. But when we come back at this timeframe, we need to have that dialogue and get the board on the same page, which ones you want to see, which you don't. At this point, for us, it's one big box that we're trying to figure out what you guys want and don't want. We just need to have a dialogue with you, without getting into a serial meeting, but just get some input from you, what's on your mind. So we can absolutely do that.
Well, I think some of us have spoken in our mind today, but you can be with it again, so, thanks.
Okay.
I'm good.
All right, then, we do have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Wait, I want to ask, the motion on, that was on the floor, was that then to hold it off to the whole comprehensive or to move forward?
To the, to the, to the spring or March timeframe, yeah.
Early 2020, we're going to come back to you with.
It was flexible, and it wasn't waiting for the whole package, it was still.
Yeah, if staff can come back sooner with that, then that's, that's, that's great.
And we were not going to wait for the whole package, we were going to move forward.
No, it's identification of, of basic areas.
Points of interest.
Okay, got it, I'm good.
And I would just mention, because you brought it up, included in that is, is the Planning Commission as well, and in the same context that we've, that you've been spending time looking at process and protocols that affects CPAC, because there have been, at least I know, there's been at least one instance where we got in a bit of a bind because we didn't have enough members, or we didn't have a full. or we didn't have a full five members of the planning commission present, and it was kind of an awkward vote that later had to be appealed. So that's just one example.
Mr. Chair, before you take the vote, there's a couple of things, Housekeeping, I want to make sure. I think I heard from all board members is that if they want to keep a secretary, keep a secretary. Don't get, everybody's good with that. Then the second one I also understand is that it's seven, but I think Delta Mac, they have 11, and the board was comfortable with leaving it at that. Continuation items, we're going to come talk to you about it in our overall thing. So that's feedback I believe that you've got.
Yeah, what I'm looking for again is, is removing roadblocks that are unnecessary and certainty for the part of the applicant. Consistency and certainty.
Got it.
Mr. Chair, just, but continuous is not the same as the appeal and the bump up.
No, I, yeah.
I get that. I just want to assure you, you were going out to your best.
I shorthanded it.
Yeah, okay.
Continuation appeal, yep.
Okay.
Boogie doke.
With that then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Thank you, and thanks staff for a lot of good work. Next staff, please.
Okay, item 34, approval of a memorandum of understanding between the Board of Supervisors and Sheriff regarding the Office of Inspector General and approve the selection of a new inspector general and authorize the county executive to negotiate and sign the contract.
Okay, as we know, we did hear this item once before and held over to give the public an opportunity to weigh in. I do have some speaker slips unless the board has any qualms with it. I think we should just go right to, since we did hear the item before, just go right to public comment. However, let Mr. Serna weigh in since he wasn't here personally.
No, and first of all, I just want to thank in public my colleagues and especially the clerk of the board and her staff and the folks in the back room with Metro Cable again for accommodating the fact that I felt compelled to participate remotely by phone for the, for the last board hearing on the subject. I'd leave it up to the chair in terms of how he wants to manage this, but I do have some questions about the strike-through MOU, and I don't know if he wants to entertain public testimony before that. It doesn't matter to me.
We can do that now. If the board has questions, then I think now's the appropriate time. Counsel, I know Lisa was one working on this or.
No, I was going to ask that question actually.
Okay, well then let's do public hearing.
Let's do public, oh, there you go.
Okay, then we will hear from the public. Nikki Jones.
There is an opportunity today to take serious steps towards accountability, though unfortunately it will not be found in a new inspector general alone. We need meaningful community oversight and we need it now. This board has proven that its oversight, along with an inspector general, without supportive powers of the community, is not enough to keep in line this unruly sheriff. Our long stretch without an inspector general is evidence of that. Right? Can we agree? Even with this new scope of services, the inspector general's accountability to the public is unclear. Their relationship to the sheriff feels awful cozy already with Scott Jones interviewing and selecting this candidate. I'm surprised the candidate, Police Chief Evanson, is not here committing to this community to find justice for Michael McIntyre, to find justice for Marshall Miles, and for any countless others that have faced the brutality, abuses, and daily violence of Scott Jones' police department, both inside the jail and out on our streets every day. You know, it makes the scope of services make such huge recommendations about what this position or contractor is meant to do, you know, reviewing all their departmental procedures and making recommendations for best practices. That should really be a community conversation. That should be a stakeholder conversation. That shouldn't be one police chief from Brentwood with a history of, honestly, being a police apologist in Seattle. It should not be his role alone. And your oversight in that matter really needs to widen the scope of community input. We'd like a community oversight board with subpoena powers, and we need to see like a lot more community forums and meetings and conversations around what we think are these best practices and how we think the inspector general should interact with the community and be accountable to the community, not just to the sheriff.
Thank you. Courtney Hanson. Followed by Mackenzie Wilson.
Hi, good afternoon. So I am here representing Decarcerate Sacramento and did want to lift up three names while we're having this discussion. So Enrique Nambu has been part of our community for 15 years. He's a talented chef and a committed father. I had the pleasure of meeting his five-year-old the other day at his press conference. Our sheriff's department recently illegally transferred him into ICE custody where he now awaits an indefinite detention, facing deportation to a place he does not call home. And he was in our CCC for four days for a very minor crime, and this happened. Under the Values Act SB 54, this type of transfer is prohibited, and our sheriff continues to violate this law and tear families apart in our county. Marshall Miles died in the hands of sheriff's deputies in November 2018. Multiple guards beat and subdued him, ignoring his cries that he could not breathe. Four of them hogtied him while he continued to communicate that he could not breathe, held him down, face down with their full body weight, using their knees, pressing down on his head, neck, back, and legs while he said he could not breathe. He lost consciousness and lay lifeless in a cell in the full view of attending officers for over a minute. This type of excessive, illegal, and inhumane abuse, these are three well-known names. But I've read through the documents, these lawsuits are endless, to the point where it seems like unnecessarily broken arms during booking is almost a policy in Sheriff Scott Jones' jails. And of course, Michael McIntyre, who three deputies fired 28 rounds at over a crowded freeway, an unarmed black man suffering a mental health crisis who posed no threat. We are tired of hearing that same story. We're tired of lawsuits being the only way to get accountability out of our sheriff's department while we pay for his ever-increasing budget. We need an independent civilian review board with subpoena power to oversee the department. This board could work with the IG. It would be a forum for the release of IG reports, data, and recommendations where the sheriff and members of the community could present in a transparent manner, and these findings and recommendations would be made in a public setting and could help guide you all. I think you would find this genuinely helpful in oversight of the sheriff, including fiscal oversight, which I know will be an ongoing priority for Decarcerate Sacramento and a lot of people in this room. And would the MOU prevent a future lockout? Just would it or would it not? Can we answer that?
Okay, thank you very much. Mackenzie?
Okay. So I was going through all the attachments and like all the things, and well, this isn't good enough. It's not. My ask is to go back to the drawing board and to stop and to do this better. The real point is that we need a community oversight board with teeth. We don't need police officers overseeing themselves. They are already the overseers, and isn't that the problem? Hasn't that been the problem everywhere? Not just here in Sacramento, everywhere. We need an oversight body that the public really trusts, one that everyone can have access to and can use. I didn't see anything in the scope of services that showed the inspector going into the jails to talk with impacted folks. I didn't see anything in the scope of services that showed that they would follow up after tickets, after stops, after arrests. I mean, do they go and they, do they talk to our unhoused neighbors after law enforcement does a sweep and takes all of their winter gear? The point is that it's the person who isn't making the complaint that we need to be talking to. People aren't making complaints because of these, because these who are inside aren't making complaints, because these overseers are already in charge of their daily lives and decisions. People on the outside aren't making these complaints because honestly, the idea that the police policing the police works is a proven fallacy. We are about to waste money on something here, you guys. Instead, let's save this money. We have folks in sheriff's custody right now who need these things, who need things. We haven't forgotten, and we know that you haven't either. But we must take the time to stop. Remember that urgency thing that we talked about last time and how toxic it is for spaces and for communities? Together, we can come up with real oversight, one that puts impacted voices first and one that gives real power to the people. You're rushing to get an inspector general because of the culture already found within our police department. We have seen lawsuit after lawsuit, dead body after dead body, family ruined after family ruined, and we aren't here to argue about the need for oversight anymore. We don't have to argue that there is something really, really wrong going on here. We don't. The position, pretty much as is, has already existed for years, and all of these things have run rampant anyways. No more. Stop. Slow down. Your community has some ideas. We have been saying this to you, we have some ideas. But like I said to you, we can't live in here with you guys. So please slow down and let your community, who does know what's needed, help you. And you can start by making this space more accessible to our voices. Shout out to the man who said that we needed something done about a 7:00 PM meeting. And I'll end with, just reject this and let's do this right because together we really, really can.
Thank you, Mackenzie. Alan Ash.
Good afternoon, supervisors. I'm Alan Ash. I'm co-chair of the Sacramento area chapter of the ACLU. The ACLU believes just as a principle that the powers we give to police are so awesome, they must be constrained by strong community oversight, which is why our chapter has been calling for years for a community-based oversight board with subpoena power. But beyond that principle, as I told you when I was here last December, our particular sheriff, through his dishonesty, lack of ethics, and lawlessness, has given us the gift of so many examples showing why this oversight is necessary. Because of my limited time, I'll just give you one example showing all three of these qualities of our sheriff from 2014, when the Trust Act went into effect in California, preventing him from turning people over to ICE, except when they had committed certain serious crimes. Our sheriff held a press conference making the dishonest claim he could not follow both the Trust Act and federal law, and because he's also a lawyer, that was unethical. And then he spent over a month refusing to follow the state law, which of course, refusing to follow the law is lawless. And finally, in February of that year, he started saying he was going to follow the Trust Act around the time he was sued by Martin Del Agua for violating it. But information continues to come out about more violations, including that lawsuit from Enrique Nambu just this month, saying that he was turned over to ICE in violation of state law. Our sheriff has also shown us the need for strong oversight by his lack of accountability and transparency when it comes to use of force, in many cases, like those of Adrian Lud, Ryan Ellis, and of course, Michael McIntyre. I say of course, Michael McIntyre, because as you all know, that's the case where the sheriff reacted to the slightest criticism of his deputy's use of force by shutting down all oversight of his department for over a year now, effectively firing the inspector general meant to oversee him. This lack of cooperation is labeled willful misconduct in our county charter, another example of lawlessness, and merely hiring another MG even with this new MOU does not give us the oversight with anywhere near the power necessary to meet the scope of the problem our sheriff has created. After almost a decade of this dishonest, unethical, lawless sheriff, Sacramento needs real sheriff oversight to restore trust with the community, barely more than half of whom re-elected him. That's why we need an oversight board that's community-based, that has subpoena power, that can really hold our sheriff accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Kern Hamilton.
Hi there, board. Thank you for having me. My name is Kern Hamilton. I'm a district, a resident of District Three. I, I'm not going to be as good a speaker as the other folks who have stood up here and said all that you should need to hear. I think you've heard this over and over again, that this sheriff needs more oversight, and you are trying to implement more oversight because he is so lawless. But we, we do continue to call for the development of an independent civilian review board, which includes subpoena power to oversee the sheriff's department. This is going to be the best way to make sure that he is not continuing to commit crimes. I was going to use an example from another state about the example that just happened last week in Florida of the police shooting several innocent civilians in the process of apprehending a criminal. But I don't think we even need to go to other states to look at this problem. It is a Sacramento problem, and people here have shared all of those issues with you in the last couple minutes. So again, civilian review board with subpoena power and enable the Office of the Inspector General to be independent so that it can scrutinize any sheriff's department irregularities. I'll repeat the call to not use someone who's been handpicked by the sheriff to oversee the sheriff. I think I will end my comments there. I don't have much more to say. I just encourage you to, to move forward with a civilian review board. Thank you.
Thank you. Khalil Ferguson.
Good evening. My name is Khalil Ferguson. As we seek to decolonize our communities by utilizing more community-based, trauma-informed approaches to our work, it is imperative that we also decolonize our ostensibly democratic institutions for the symbols of colonialism and colonial harm, that being law enforcement. What I'm saying is, the elected position, that is, the county sheriff should not have oversight by another predetermined law enforcement official, but be held accountable by an independent civilian review board. Other than by the ballot and by expressing disdain for the upholders of American common law, otherwise known as settler colonial law, the community has no institutional power to hold the sheriff accountable. The local municipality has no current way of counterbalancing the abuse of power that the county sheriff has demonstrated, as the current MOU doesn't go far enough. The language in Section Four of the MOU between the Board of Supervisors, Inspector General, and Sacramento Sheriff's Office says, and I quote, "The parties understand and agree that the Sacramento Sheriff's Office and other county departments shall cooperate with the Office of the Inspector General by granting him or her reasonable access to county facilities." This language alone still grants legal hierarchy for the sheriff to control access to facilities and information. What we're asking for is oversight, not community oversight to fulfill political pander, but concrete oversight with access to information and the power to subpoena in the form of a civilian review board. This can be done via an initiative sponsored by this Board of Supervisors if you all are truly fighting for accountability.
Thank you, Khalil. And to be clear, the MOU is between the Board of Supervisors and the sheriff, and the OIG actually isn't a party to it. Okay, all right. Allegra Taylor, yes, Allegra.
Hi, thank you for having me. So I live in District Seven and run a veterans home in District Six. This is a human rights issue. When there is no accountability, sometimes people choose to go rogue. If I had the opportunity to pick my supervisor, I would pick somebody that's going to give me some leeway. So I'm curious as to, why would you vote now on this? If what has occurred is what has occurred and Scott has picked his own supervisor, that's a bit of a challenge. How do you really have oversight with that? So citizens have the right. You say you want to hear from us, but when we come and we tell you what it is that we want you to do, are you really listening to us? So this is the community. This, we're from the trauma-based community, the ones that are experiencing some of these human rights issues at the hands of the police, be it the sheriff or the police. So it is important that you implement a review system where citizens are involved and maybe choosing from people or families that have been affected and traumatized by what has occurred in the criminal justice system, in the county as well as in the city. This is a human rights issue. You shouldn't have the right to choose your boss because that alone just looks a little fishy. So are we going to have the same kind of situation that we had before? I think they were, his previous IG was his friend, if I'm not mistaken. So is this another cozy relationship where there's really not going to be any accountability? We want fairness. We want to be treated like human beings, and those that are accosted by the criminal justice system, be it the sheriff or the police, sometimes things go bad. You've seen that by what my. You've seen that by what my previous colleagues out here have spoken about the challenges that has occurred. As a result, there has been death. So I would hope that you would reconsider and not vote yes for this.
Thank you. Liz Blum. Followed by Ryan McClintock.
So Supervisor Kennedy, we met last week, and I just wanted to share, coming from myself, I was surprised, pretty surprised to hear that you say you've been trying to implement a civilian oversight committee, and you've been saying that for about two years now. You said you don't like the process of choosing an OIG, and we haven't seen you take any stance to change that. You said yourself, this doesn't prevent any future lockouts of inspector generals, and why haven't you taken any public stance saying that? We just, I guess I can only speak for myself, but I just want you to know that, you know, I appreciated everything that you said in our meeting last week, but it was just really shocking and surprising to me that I haven't heard you say any of that here in this room and in public. And I think your community needs courage from you, and I think it needs you to actually put some strong action with those things that you say you believe. And I'm here to urge you to do that, and one way that you can do that today is by proposing a motion to amend the current thing on the table today to incorporate a civilian oversight committee. And you can do that today. And I think, I hope, Don and Phil, I hope that you'll support that motion if it happens. And your community supervisor, Kennedy, is really depending on you to match your actions with your words.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Can you guys hear me okay? As you guys well-known, as you're hearing from community stakeholders, this process needs to be looked at intently and to be slowed down. Having a chance to meet with several of you at different points on different issues, I know you guys like to be thorough in your assessment of this as a good decision for our county or not. I think this needs to have the same attention and integrity behind it. Rushing into a decision about a position that we've had vacant for a year, and I say rushing because it was all of, a few weeks ago, we find out that there's even candidates for the position that are being put into place. Find that the process is going on, but where's the community at? We've constantly had complaints, at this day, it's from every one of your districts of community members, saying that the sheriff is problematic in how he operates. If he's part of the review process, we also need to have independent community members a part of that process too, so we can feel secure with who's securing us. I think that you guys do do a good job of reviewing some of those things, but I think the intentionality has to be more focused. As previously lifted by my brothers and sisters with Decarcerate SAC, as well as SAC Criminal Act, ACLU, this is something that we can have a community voice in that's informed and understands the complexities of the challenge of putting the right person in position. So I encourage you to put into motion to include civilian oversight on this election process, but also look at the oversight board for the sheriff's department as well. Subpoena power being a key function of it, what are the recommendations that can go through the OIG that can be investigated to a thorough sense, and making sure that we have the right people looking at oversight, not only for our community members, but for you as well? Because I've also heard this board have challenges with the way that the sheriff's department's operated, and the fiscal responsibility that falls on that. Because how many more lawsuits are we going to have to pay tax dollars, with tax dollars, to cover for the sheriff's office's missteps? When are we learning from those mistakes? It's one thing to continue to have them and have to address them, but it's another thing if there's no trajectory of learning from them and minimizing them. So I definitely implore that we include civilian oversight within this process, but also as a body at the county level that can inform you guys as well as our community of what's happening, what the challenges between the sheriff's department and our community members. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's the last card I have. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So first, let me again thank the folks from Decarcerate and ACLU, and I don't think we heard anyone necessarily from ACT, but I know that they've been very engaged on the subject. Oh, sorry. I didn't hear you. I didn't hear you identify yourself as such. My bad. So I appreciate all of you for being here again in the middle of the day to express yourselves, and I think you did so, I think eloquently, so I appreciate that. I've got a series of questions. It's more on the technical wording side of the MOU, but let me, I just want to kind of set the table a little bit and offer this as a reminder. Back about this time last year, a little over a year ago, we were at the conclusion of a very tumultuous number of months following the sheriff's decision to lock the then IG out of the jail and keep him from basically performing his duties, and that's what really ignited the concern expressed by some board members and certainly the community about it, and rightfully so. And so, ever since all of those activities transpired, I've been very, very focused on what is it that we can do, what's under our control, certainly with the advice and direction from county council's office. This has got to be a legal proposal as much as anything else, and one that's enforceable. But what can we do to help avoid what the whole community went through last year? What can we do to address some of the concerns that were expressed by some of the speakers here today and that I expressed articulated last year, which is, how do we keep that from happening again? So what are some of the safeguards that we can put in place that the sheriff would agree to? And while some may find that very distasteful because you're asking the sheriff to agree to it, that is really the product of, again, a lot of counsel with our legal advice, our legal team, about what, per the California Constitution, what we can and cannot do. And so that was really the impetus for the idea of an MOU, which I proposed as part of one of the last series of motions that this board entertained last year to move forward with exploration of how to make that happen. And so now, today, we find ourselves at a decision point about not just the recommended candidate, but also a new protocol, a new process that would be in place, that was not in place last year, that introduces a dispute resolution process. For me, the most important part of the action that we're expected to consider today is that, is that with a dispute resolution process that is agreed to in the form of a MOU that is executed by the sheriff and by the chair of the Board of Supervisors, that we have some better understanding that if, in the future, this sheriff, and if it's a future sheriff, it'd have to be re-executed, I believe, by that sitting sheriff and the chair at that time. But what it would do is offer a different avenue of, or a different sequence of events that the community and the board could expect if there is disagreement between the sheriff and the office of inspector general in terms of their performance, their work product, whether it be a report that there's disagreement over. And while I know some may say, well, you know, we're not going to be satisfied until we have some guarantees that no one gets locked out. What I think this does do, that there's the dispute resolution clauses in the MOU, what I think it does do is it gives the entire community and the board and the sheriff and the OIG, quite frankly, some breathing room to really assess and do so more than just a unilateral decision made by one person, namely the sheriff, which is what happened last year, but it gives a broader group of folks, other bodies, including a judicial one, a retired Superior Court judge acting as a mediator, to understand what is in conflict between the sheriff and the inspector general, and to give us, the board and through us, the community, a better understanding of what's at issue. And so, you know, I don't know that that would necessarily guarantee the resolution that some would want, that are the guarantee, that there might not, at the end of that process, still be some dispute about what the inspector general can or should do or cannot do. But at least it gives us some breathing room to have some deeper exploration that involves more than just that one individual, the sheriff. And so I think there's a lot of value to it. And without that, quite frankly, I wouldn't be prepared to move forward with any of this because if, without that dispute resolution process that is in the form of this MOU, and that expectation by the parties to the MOU, what we'd have is exactly what we had last year. And so there'd still be the opportunity for this sheriff or a future sheriff to act completely unilaterally to keep the inspector general from doing their job. And so that's why I've been very, very focused on this for the last year, and I appreciate the assistance of Chair Kennedy and our former acting county council and our now permanent county council, Lisa Travis, in helping us navigate the legal opportunities that we have with this kind of instrument. And so it's with that that I do have a number of questions about the MOU, and I'm looking particularly at the strike-through version of the MOU, and these are questions really for Lisa. Let's see. Let's start on page one, under purpose. The paragraph one. So when it references the office, and this is general to the whole thing because I see it struck through consistently, I'm just curious why the reference to office versus Sacramento Sheriff's Department?
Right, and Chair Kennedy may have a better insight onto that, but that was a strike-through request from the sheriff himself. And I don't, the reason was not provided to me.
I'm going to assume, correct me if I'm wrong, that because this is an MOU that's executed by an individual, not an entire department, that that's part of the reason?
That's what his.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Concern was.
I do have a significant concern. Now on to the second paragraph under purpose, they're still on page one. I noticed that the phrase "work product" and/or "performance" is struck, and I know "performance" is added back in before that, so it's really about this term "work product" that's struck through consistently throughout the final MOU here. I have some concerns about that because "work product" is exactly what was the subject last year of the grievance expressed by the sheriff. It was the OIG's report. So is there, what's the rationale behind striking?
I guess I'm going to have to, you know, step in to support my counsel here, because a lot of these were done as a negotiation between the sheriff and myself, and that was the, by virtue of that negotiation, my feeling was, was that a word like "performance" is satisfactorily vague to take into account "work product."
And I think the addition of "scope" actually makes it broader in favor, quote, of the county.
Right.
So is it appropriate, then, to consider the addition of the word "scope" and substitution for "work product"? Does that basically encapsulate his or her, the OIG's, you know, whatever they produce in terms of report?
Correct.
Or, okay.
That's how I would read it.
That's how I interpreted it.
Okay. Then on to page two, under access to county facilities, critical incidents. I'd like to understand what constitutes reasonable. It says it's been added by granting him/her reasonable access to county facilities.
So that was, for example, just not unfettered access to the jail, particularly in instances where there was security issues at risk.
Okay.
But let's just throw out a crazy hypothetical. There's a riot going on in the jail. He can't demand to be, you know, allowed to enter the facility at that time, that type of thing.
I mean, it might be reasonable for him to enter, him or her, the OIG, to enter at that time, but that's going to be a question of fact, I think.
So isn't that, isn't the kind of expected access to the facilities, or in this case, the jail more specifically, isn't that kind of spelled out too in the scope? So couldn't you have a qualifier in there saying reasonable access as per the scope of services?
Sure.
I think that makes it clearer for the public.
I'm sorry. I apologize for answering the questions, but I'm the one that's going to have to take this back.
No, I understand. I understand. And then I thought I heard, again, I wasn't here for the last board hearing on the subject. I was participating remotely, so it was a little challenging, but I could have sworn that there was, someone verbally mentioned, maybe Lisa was you, that, again, that same section four, under access to county facilities, that there was a mistake in the final strike-through version of the MOU, and that the phrase that the failure to do so constitutes a potential violation of Sacramento County Charter's Section 75 had actually been struck?
That's right. And I thought we.
It's back in.
Had changed.
Okay, so it's back in?
No.
No, I mean, it's back in the report, though.
Oh, well.
That's very confusing.
I agree. I asked that it be replaced, but that didn't happen.
Be replaced with?
The correct strike-through should have been replaced. This is not the correct strike-through that is now attached to.
Okay, so I guess I'll just stop directing my questions to you, and I'll direct them to you.
Well, no, I mean, I mean, that.
No, no, no.
This one, she actually did play a role in it.
But substantively, I guess what I have.
Substantively, that should be struck out.
I understand.
Okay.
But I still have an issue with it until I get a good understanding or explanation about why it's being struck, especially, it would mean something completely different if it didn't have the qualifier potential in there. And I understand you had to go and negotiate with Mr. Jones, but.
So I actually felt, as you do, about, I mean, you and I have spoken publicly about this particular subject in the past, and you and I are in agreement, but, you know, he felt very strongly about that. I went to county council, and county council's opinion was that it doesn't make one, it doesn't make a difference whether it's in or whether it's out.
Right. Whether it's a violation of Charter 70, or by potential or an actual, it doesn't matter if it's in the MOU or not. It's still a violation if the actions.
So then, if it's struck, then are we assuming that, what are we assuming, then?
The county's not assuming anything. The county can still allege that it's a violation, his actions or her actions, are a violation of the Charter section.
Okay, so that's enlightening for me, because so therefore, that tells me that there really wouldn't be any harm, other than perhaps the sheriff disagreeing with the language and keeping it in as it's been written, right? Because it makes it explicit, not implicit. So I have an issue with that. Let's see, on to page three, top of page three, first paragraph. It says, "The OIG shall remain on the critical incident call-out roster and shall be notified when critical incidents occur up and until a determination is made." A determination made by whom?
Where is this?
Can you repeat?
Second line, top of page.
It's top of page three.
Second line.
It's, I guess it's still under Roman numeral four, continuation.
That was in the original.
Not those words, is it?
No, I know. I'm just, to me, it, do we need to be a little bit clearer about that?
Supervisor Serna, I took your words from that one.
I understand.
Okay.
Up and until a determination is made. Right. So in that case, the OIG remains on the critical call-out incident list unless someone determines it's appropriate to restrict OIG access. That's what it says. That's what it meant, means. And then, the issue then would be if someone says it's not appropriate to have access to the OIG, then we would institute the dispute resolution process on that issue.
Got it.
So it's a default that he or she, being the OIG, remain on the critical call-out incident.
Just for clarification, while you're on that point, then, so the only way that the IG. IG would not be on the call-out roster for critical incidents would be, I guess, of their own volition, and/or if a determination is made under this heading here. Otherwise, there's no qualifying that the OIG is on the critical incident call roster, should be, will be, and will remain so, unless this determination is made. So there's no, there's no other circumstances accounted for here that says, there's, you know, some other extenuating circumstance that the sheriff or somebody else can make that call, right? Is that correct?
Correct.
So this is very explicit as to, you're on it, this position is to be notified of all critical incidents, the person holding that position, unless one determination is made, or I guess the OIG could say, I don't want to be on the critical incident list, although the contract doesn't provide for that. Basically, you are on it, you will remain on it, this is the only exception that would then call the dispute resolution. Okay, thanks, I was curious.
Let's see, on to page four, be the third paragraph, starting with mediator shall. In the middle of that paragraph, there's an addition after sheriff, says "or his designee." I've got, I find this objectionable, I think that if the, if there is a disagreement that garners the deployment of a mediation process as per this MOU, it's not the, it's not the sheriff's designee that has acted to trigger the need for that mediation process, it's the sheriff himself or herself. And I think it's important that it be the sheriff that be present for a publicly agendized Board of Supervisors meeting, not, not the undersheriff, not a captain, or...
I'm comfortable taking that back to him.
Okay. Good. Let's see. I think those were, those are all my concerns.
Okay. Supervisor Nottoli.
Yes, and not so much on the MOU, but just to, the points were made here, and I know that the clerk responded in the cover letter relative to the contacting the OIG, but I guess, as relates to the comments here, because I think, I believe it's addressed in here, but I just wanted to be sure that it was stated as such, that conditions in the jail and/or jails, and situations in neighborhoods and community, there are processes embodied here, this is the agreement between the board, but in the contract with the OIG, and under the provision of scope of services, all those things are provided for, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And there's, and, and only based upon the conditions of the MOU relative to access to facilities and any circumstance that would result in a, in a lockout, this talks about dispute resolution process, but all those others, the scope of those things are provided for, and would be, if we give you the direction, go out and negotiate the contract today as part of the action, then is that scope of services only brought to this board under the contract for board approval, or you, you know, it doesn't require any further affirmation on this part?
It does not. You've approved that, and that's what we'll execute the contract on.
Okay. And in that scope, is there a provision, let me get sidetracked from the MOU here, but is there a provision then, that there would be, and again, doesn't necessarily fall to the Chair, but the introduction to the community as to how that would be handled, is there...
I was actually going to give a direction on that, but it's not...
Oh, you are, well, that's fine. I don't want to, you know, I'm waiting for you to do that.
Well, no, no, I mean, at the end of comments, I was going to hear from the dais, make my suggestion.
Okay.
It's not codified, if that's what you're looking for, but I, I do have some thoughts.
Okay, good. Well, I'll hold any response, I'm fine with that, to let you speak, and then I can ask if I have any questions. Okay, thanks.
All right, just some clarity before we move on to other aspects of what we're being asked to consider today. I just want to make sure that, and I think I know the answer, but that Chair Kennedy understands that I've issued some specific concerns and suggestions. Sounds like you're willing to take what I've suggested back to the, to the sheriff to get his thoughts on. And again, as much as there may be some in the community that find that whole exercise distasteful, it's really important for folks to realize that we are asking the sheriff to execute this with the Chair of the board. He does not have to execute anything. And, you know, that's, that's just the legal, that's a legal fact. So I'm seeing you shake your head, so I just want to express my appreciation for your ongoing willingness to do that.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I have a few comments. One is, I'd like to look at what other jurisdictions do as far as going out and hiring OIG. This was a very clunky process. It's, it's, as the members of the public are accurate, that it's a strange process on how we do this hiring, and, and I don't, I was not here when it was established, I don't know which one of us, which ones of us were. And part of it is driven by collective bargaining agreements, I understand that, but I don't, there's got to be a more perfect way of hiring an OIG than the way we're doing it. So I would like to look at what other organizations do. The second thing is, I will take the comments. The third is the rollout. And, you know, I, I'm open to suggestion, my suggestion to NAV was that our PIO, or whatever Kim's title is now, work with all five of our offices, and actually develop a rollout and a schedule and identified organizations that he should go out to and meet with. We all know our district better than, you know, I mean, you know your district better than I do, I'm trying to say. So I, I think that we should have our public information staff working with all five of us to put together a plan and an actual agenda and a roadmap as to how we do that rollout. I am also asking, and after this is done, if it is done, that we have a public press conference in which all five board members have the opportunity to be there, to introduce to the press, and that would happen, could happen as early as tomorrow. I believe that Kim is working out some details there, and, but held off until we knew what was going to happen here today. So any other suggestions? Please bring them up at any point.
I just want to get some clarity on one thing, because it was brought up, I think, by every single speaker this afternoon and in past hearings. Is any of the actions that we're taking today preclude this board from engaging the work necessary for the consideration of, of a, of a new kind of oversight body? I know Chair Kennedy has certainly been very vocal about that intent, but there, I just want to make it clear for the public that there's nothing that, by way of the action that we're, that's in front of us today, that precludes us from continuing to explore that, looking at other jurisdictions. Because I sense that some may think that this is going to be the, the last time that oversight of the sheriff is discussed for a while, and I beg to differ, I don't think that's going to be the case.
Right. From a, from a strictly legal perspective, you're 100% correct. There's nothing that the board, any action that the board is taking today that would prevent anything that you've discussed in the past or that Supervisor Kennedy suggests today.
And, and thank you Supervisor Serna, I agree with you, and I fully intend to, you know, work with whoever wants to work with me, to do that. However, I will say, in my opinion, unlike what one of the speakers said, it couldn't be addressed today, it wasn't agendized.
Oh, correct.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, is there a motion?
I'll move approval.
We have a motion and a second, with the understanding of the discussion that we just had. Hold those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Thank you very much.
Supervisor Kennedy, if I could, since the board just approved this item, we could attempt to have a press conference by 1:30 tomorrow, if the board is so inclined. I'll give Kim the direction to start putting that in motion then.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I could already tell you right now, I'm not going to be here. I'm already, I'm already precedent as it is, so...
I understand. Okay.
1:45, 2 o'clock, it'd be better.
Yeah, maybe work with this, I don't know what my calendar looks like, I'm with you, though.
It's just trying, 1:30 time Kim sent me is when the, their news cycle is, they're trying to get TV stuff, but between 1:30 to 2, we'll see if we can get them in.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next item?
nominations.
I believe we have appointments.
Your nominations, item 35. You are continuing to December 17th, Elk Grove, Kasumnas Cemetery District, the Maternal-Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, continuing to January 14th, 2020. The Cemetery Advisory Commission continuing to January 28th. The Assessment Appeals Board, County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Kasumnas, Recreation and Park Commission, and then the Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council. For your matters today, you have the Adult and Aging Commission, Mr. Kennedy.
Chief recommend reappointing Kerry Voughtman and Patricia Waite, and continue the remainder to January 28th.
Children's Coalition.
Chief recommend continuing until January 28th.
County Service Area 4C Delta, Mr. Nottoli.
Would nominate for reappointment Mario Moreno.
And you want to continue the remainder?
Yeah, or to the first of the year.
January 14th. And then we have the Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council, Mr. Kennedy.
Chief recommend reappointing Natalie Gray, and continue the remainder to January 28th.
Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee.
Chief recommend continue the item until January 28th.
Pharoah Cemetery District, Supervisor Peters.
Please continue to January 14th.
And First Five Sacramento Commission, Mr. Kennedy.
Chief recommend closing the application period and continuing the item to December 17th.
Galt Arno Cemetery District, Supervisor Nottoli.
Yes, I would nominate the reappointment of Rob Roberts, and could we do some confirmation that we actually do have two vacancies in addition to this one?
I'm sorry.
Could we do some confirmation as to whether we have two vacancies, because I will do some outreach, we need to get to the local newspaper and, and get the word out through the city of Galt, and this area goes beyond that, but to get the word out that there's, if there are in fact vacancies.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
And then we have Mission Oaks Recreation and Park District, Supervisor Peters.
Nominate Robert Evans, and continue the remainder to December 17th.
Okay. Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, Mr. Kennedy.
Chief recommend reappointing Jennifer Churchill and Christian Landverd, I probably got that wrong, continue the remainder to January 28th.
Sacramento County Mental Health Board, Supervisor Frost.
Continue to January 14, please.
Okay. Sacramento County Youth Commission, Supervisor Peters.
Please continue to January 14th.
And Supervisor Nottoli.
Likewise, we've done some additional outreach, but haven't heard any candidates yet, so yes, January 14th.
Okay. Sacramento Environmental Commission, Mr. Kennedy.
Chief recommend continuing till January 28th.
Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission, Mr. Kennedy.
Continue to January 14th.
And Mr. Nottoli.
Continue to December 17th, 2019.
You got it. South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Mr. Kennedy.
Continue to January 14th.
And Mr. Serna?
Please continue to January 28th.
Okay. And your last one is the Sylvan Cemetery District, Supervisor Frost.
Please reappoint Joe Freeman and Pat Clark.
Okay. Then that concludes your nominations.
Okay. With that, is there any, Mr. Gill, you have any comments?
No, sir, not.
Any comments of the board before we have an adjournment?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Quickly, I don't know, item is on the agenda as communication referred. Item 38, you know, we've seen this in the past, and the telecom providers continue to press for relief on taxes. Is there a status that someone could give us, Lisa, not necessarily here, but these get referred, I know there are appeals and so forth, but I'm just curious, we saw a whole slew of these a couple of years ago, substantive, and now we're getting subsequent years that are being appealed?
Yeah, we did a status last year, I think, of similar nature. We will get, working with county council, we'll get a status back to you.
That's fine, again, I just, I just took notice of it. Okay, thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. With that, Ms. Peters?
Thank you. I have an adjournment for tonight, and that is to adjourn in memory of Lena Fatt. Last month, Sacramento area lost a great businesswoman, Lena Fatt, who's been widely credited with building the Fatt Family Restaurant Group. She was born in Hong Kong and came to the United States to attend college in Nashville, Tennessee. After graduation, she attended UC San Francisco Medical Center School of Pharmacy, where she met her husband, who was studying dentistry, Ken Fatt, the son of restaurateur Frank Fatt. They graduated together and moved to Sacramento. Ken had a dental practice, and Lena worked as a part-time pharmacist, and stayed home with the couple's young children until 1974. And that's when the Fatt family was looking at opening a restaurant in Old Sacramento, and she suggested it be based on the minor-themed China camp, which led her father-in-law and his sons, Wing and Tom, to unexpectedly tap her to be the chef. When Fat City Bar and Grill opened next door, two years later, she helped devise the menu there. A catering operation was also started, and two more in restaurants, two more restaurants in Roseville and Folsom followed, and Lena became the group's executive corporate chef. She eventually left the kitchen and wore many hats within the Fatt Family Restaurant Group, ending her time with the company as a vice president of culinary research and development. Her brother-in-law, Jerry, is the CEO. Her son, Kevin, is a chief operating officer. Lena was named restaurateur of the year by the California Restaurant Association Sacramento Chapter in 1987. She published a cookbook in 1992, and was named businesswoman of the year by the Sacramento Metro Chamber in 2000. And she never officially retired, most recently providing input on the dinner menu for Governor Gavin Newsom and his family in June. Last August, Lena was on hand with the family to celebrate the 80th anniversary of the founding of Frank Fatt's. With her passing, Lena Fatt is survived by her husband Ken, their three children, and eight grandchildren, and numerous other family members. The Fatt Family Restaurant Group is a pillar of our area's culinary scene, and that scene would not have been possible without Lena Fatt's involvement. It's only fitting that our board adjourn in her memory. Lena Fatt.
Thank you very much. So with that, we will adjourn in the name of Lena Fatt.
Good job today.